It is six o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is in session. I'm going to ask Mrs. Eichner if she would lead us in prayer and the pledge, if you please stand.
In light of recent events involving police officers and the winter storm last week and attending a retirement of one of the sheriff's officers just recently, and in recognition of all of our police and firemen who are going to be honored tonight, I would like to offer this prayer, not only as a prayer, but also as a blessing for all of those who wear the uniform. Please join me. Lord, tonight we pray specifically for those who sacrifice daily, men and women who serve to protect our local community and around the globe, those who serve in our armed forces, our veterans, our police, our fire, and our first responders. We ask, Lord, that you watch over them every hour of every day. Give them strength, courage, and perseverance to endure the danger and the physical abuse to which they are sometimes subjected. Give them your almighty protection, Lord, because their duty to serve others is not easy. We also ask, Lord, that you be with their families. Let us be mindful of the sacrifices that they make as well. As their loved ones fight for us, let us extend our hands and our hearts to them. Help us, Lord, to never turn our backs on those who serve us. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
I might add that Ms. Eichner has family serving in the armed forces overseas. In the front of our agenda book, every time we have a council meeting, is the Community Vision, which is developed by citizens for the Comprehensive Plan Kerrville 2050. And I thought this would be a good occasion to read that and remind us. The Community Vision, Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it, seeks to attract economic growth and development, provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages, and does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community. If anyone tonight wishes to speak on a matter that's on the agenda, if you will, please sign up with the city secretary here and indicate the item that you're going to be speaking to. When you're called, please come to the microphones here on either side and begin by stating name and address for the record. Public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after the public comments. Now, we have community announcements of community interest. Just kind of yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I'd be back to a little more normal setup tonight than a few times. We have a couple of announcements about things coming up. Two big library announcements, both of these I think are going to be a lot of fun, just in time for Valentine's Day. Everybody remembers next Monday, in case you've forgotten, don't forget. The library this Thursday, February 10th at 4:30 PM, is going to be teaching us how to make chocolate truffles. So I think that's going to be very interesting. I might go over there and check it out myself. Like I said, this is February 10th at 4:30 PM. All supplies are provided, and that's free and open to the public. Sure looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. Drew a lot of interest today on Facebook, so I would encourage people to check it out. All right. Let me see. Is there anybody in this room who doesn't know who Clifton Pfeiffer is? Well, if you don't, you have a great chance to meet him this Saturday from two to three at the History Center. He'll be talking a little bit about the history of the Doyle Center there over there in the Doyle community. If you haven't heard him, he is a great, great guy to listen to, a lot of fun. I encourage everybody to go by and see him. The public is encouraged to come learn more about the Doyle Center. Again, this one is free of charge, and the Kerr Regional History Center is located 425 Water Street. So another great event that we're looking forward to. And finally, the last time we were here, we talked about the activity guide coming out. I don't know if you guys have seen it up there, but it is here now, hot off the press, so we have five copies for you. And I'm sure if you're very, if you ask very nicely, the mayor will autograph each one for you.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Thanks.
Okay. What time is Clifton at the library?
From two to three.
Two to three, okay. Clifton Pfeiffer, who's played ball here, was a teacher, coach. He has 14 different characters that he portrays in different kind of settings around the state, literally. Just an interesting guy. Let me mention to you something, and then I'll go to anything else that the council has. Over the weekend, I signed a declaration of disaster in regards to the winter storm landing, which the city responded to for several days last week. This was in conjunction with Governor Abbott's disaster declaration and ensures the city can receive reimbursement funding for their emergency response efforts if the state provides any such funding. Chief Maloney will further elaborate when he presents that item later in the agenda. I know some have said, you know, that wasn't like last winter storm. Here's the thing, last winter, we discovered the damage that had been done some weeks after the storm. This is just a preemptive measure in case we need those funds. All right, city council, do you have items for community interest?
I would like to add another Clifton Pfeiffer event. It will be Friday, February 25th, and it will be at the Doyle Center. And I think there'll be some Doyle history, but there'll also just be Black history, so in honor of Black History Month. So I don't have the time, but we'll have that out, but just another evening to enjoy and learn.
Mayor, can I speak to that? I can give more details on what she just brought up.
Quickly, yes.
So it's supposed to be February 25th, six to eight, and it's going to be, they're calling it Remember When. So what he's doing is he's having a bunch of the residents, the older residents, giving descriptions of, remember when we used to have this, the milkman, the snow cone man, different stuff like that. So that's really what it's going to be mostly about.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
All right. At this time, the, I would like for Chief Maloney to come forward. I'm sorry, Chief McCall. And I don't have the text of the presentation.
I'll make it, sir.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay.
Mayor, council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize several of our hard-working employees publicly. We changed, if you remember in the past, we normally have an Officer of the Year that we recognize in front of this body each year. We changed the setup of that this year and changed how that whole award process occurs. We now have not only an Officer of the Year award, but also a Supervisor of the Year award, as well as a Civilian of the Year award. And how we come to those selections are through nominations of their peers within the agency. We ask all of their peers within the agency to nominate who they believe is worthy of each of those awards. And this year's recipients, if they are here, if they could join me here at the front, Elizabeth Adame is our civilian employee of the year. Elizabeth was, is our Criminal Investigations Unit Administrative Specialist. She has responsibilities for preparing and submitting all cases to the various prosecutorial offices. She's the last set of eyes on those cases before they leave our department and get submitted. Her coworkers describe her work as meticulous, as someone with a strong work ethic who goes above and beyond regularly. Besides her duties that are expected through her job description, she goes above and beyond just taking care of all of us in the department. Specifically, our Criminal Investigations Unit cited her ability to improve their morale through ensuring that personal events are recognized, birthdays, family events. She's even gone to the lengths of purchasing gifts for employees on their birthdays and helping us ensure that we're celebrating their life events, helping create more of a family and team atmosphere. All those that she works around are very grateful for that and say that that's a trait that is contagious within the unit, and we appreciate her. She received multiple nominations from her peers for this award, and this award was presented in December to all of these employees at our annual Christmas party, but we appreciate the opportunity to get to present them here tonight. So congratulations, Elizabeth. Our next award will be for Supervisor of the Year, if Sergeant Hal Degenhart can join me. Sergeant Degenhart, I'm going to read one of his nominations, because it puts it into better words than I can describe. Sergeant Degenhart, he's an 18-year officer with the Kerrville Police Department and has held the rank of Sergeant for 11 and a half years. He's recently been selected as our range master for our department, which makes him responsible for all things in regards to firearms training, supplies, as well as planning our training days. Hal's taken it upon himself to really overhaul that program, and he has created quite an impressive training regiment for us and has really improved the safety on the range for the officers that are attending. Beyond that, Hal's described as a person who has a wealth of knowledge of the criminal element within our community. If something is going on out in the community, likely he has a connection to someone who he can talk to to get more information, to help start leading us down a path to solving things. He's also one of those individuals that when you have someone who you're dealing with who may be difficult, he's a great one to step in, has great communication skills, and can very much empathize with the people that he deals with on the street. We're very proud of his supervisory skills as well. He's a person that sees the big picture and leads by example, and definitely drives home the mission of the Kerrville Police Department to all of his troops and does his best to take care of all of his folks. We appreciate you, Hal, we appreciate all you do for the department and the community, and congratulations on the supervisor. And last but certainly not least is our Officer of the Year, Benjamin Ledesma can join me. Detective Benjamin Ledesma. Ben has been a police officer with us for four years, and he is definitely the epitome of the can-do kind of guy. He brings that attitude to work with him every day, and he is infectious to those around him. That attitude is infectious to those around him. Kind of as an example of his can-do attitude, I'm going to list off some of the things that he does for our department, and quite frankly, I am certain I'm going to leave something out, because he touches so many places of our operation daily. It's extremely impressive. When this nomination was written, it was written as Officer Ledesma, I should point out. He is now Detective Ledesma, as he's been promoted recently to detective and been placed in our Criminal Investigations Unit. But as he worked as a patrol officer over the last year, many times he served as an acting supervisor and a shift leader. He worked as part of our evidence collection team. He was an evidence technician. He's also an operator on our Special Operations Unit. He's also assisted us in our recruiting efforts as part of our recruiting team, as well as part of our training cadre. He's currently an instructor for TASER. As I said, I know there are many other things that I'm missing that he does for our agency, but that's just kind of an overview of how many places that he touches. During the previous year, he has been not only an inspiration to those around him, but he also is very active in the community, mentoring children at Notre Dame, as well as previously through the Kerrville Independent School District. Ben is definitely the epitome of what you want a police officer to be. He has a caring heart and a servant's heart, and truly cares for the community and those that he serves. So congratulations, Detective Ledesma.
Ben, you've got family here, don't you?
I do, yes.
Can I stand up here?
Yes. My mom's over there, and then my young'un's right here.
If you can get all of the awards recipients up the front, we'd like to grab a picture of you real quick.
Good to see you, man.
Chief, you want to get that one?
Sure.
We got one more here, one more right here.
All right, so a little different for the presentation from the Fire Department today. So we're doing a unit citation of merit, so we're going to bring in just a few of our guys with the Fire Department. So Mr. Mayor, if you'll come down, I'll read the citation, but I'll hand.
Okay.
There'll be a little bit of a delay, but they'll be coming in.
Excuse me.
Come in behind you, chief.
Do you want to mull up?
Here they come. I'll read the citation.
Okay.
Come on up front.
You go with the citation?
Yes.
All right, I'm standing here in the middle. Guys, come on up here.
All right. The tradition of the Kerrville Fire Department is to recognize those members for their outstanding efforts during their career. These awards recognize their achievements, exemplary efforts, and determination to achieve the mission. The unit citation of merit is awarded to a company, crew, team, or task force that has performed in outstanding manner worthy of recognition. On October 23rd, 2021, the Kerrville Fire Department responded to a mass casualty incident at the airport race course. The dispatch information came from an ambulance on scene that requested multiple units to respond to the airport. Acting Battalion Chief Casey Goodman quickly initiated a coordinated response that included two engines, one rescue, five ambulances, three chief officers, and requested four additional air medical helicopters. Upon arrival, crews faced a tragic accident that would require a coordinated response with multiple agencies and volunteers to save precious lives. Their quick actions and team effort provided a unified command structure that performed instant stabilization, patient triage, treatment, and transportation in coordination with the Kerrville Police Department, Mountain Home Volunteer Fire Department, Center Point Volunteer Fire Department, the Kerr County First Responder Organization. Tragically, three lives were lost that day, but will not be forgotten. I want to take this opportunity also to thank our regional first responders and agencies that supported our department during the incident, the Mountain Home Volunteer Fire Department, the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department, Kerr County First Responder Organization, Fredericksburg Fire Department, Peterson Regional Medical Center, Airyvac, Airlife, Methodist Air Care, Strack MedCom, Texas Department Emergency Management Ambus, and the Alamo Heights Critical Incident Stress Management Team. As chief, I am proud of the courage and teamwork of these professional men and women that displayed calm in the chaos. They exemplified our mission of exceptional team, efficient methods, and excellent service. The following Fire Department members will receive a unit citation of merit in recognition of their meritorious and outstanding performance in overcoming difficulties under adverse conditions. Acting Battalion Chief Casey Goodman, Engine One Crew Lieutenant Joel Bryant, Driver Jeff Neal, Rescue One Driver Philip Randall, Engine Three Lieutenant Guy McDonald, Jess Connor, Wesley Lewis, Medic One Leslie Martinez and Gerbiel Winchester, Medic Three Scott Parsley, Austin Hemming, Medic Four Patrick Bernelli, Colton Hughes, Medic Five Mason Linder and Jared Taylor, Medic Six Patrick Prouse and Bart Bartlett, Battalion Chief Mark Logue, Battalion Chief Billy Williams, and off-duty Kerrville Fire Department personnel Lieutenant Dwayne Kutsar, Lieutenant Monty Johnson, and Ben Scalino. So these are the recipients of the unit citation of merit, so.
You want us to be pictured, right? Okay, let's look here, and then we'll look over here. Okay, now over here. Here, let me say, before you go, I want to say, this council, the city staff, and this community really support you guys. I see it all the time, see it many, many ways, but I hope you sense that. Now, one other thing I'll tell you, y'all can stay here for the rest of the meeting. We'll go through all the ordinances and zoning, changing codes. You're welcome to. Chief, if I could get that info on the unit, part of what you read. I don't want to be on the radio in the morning, I could use it. Yeah, all right. Okay, now we come to our visitors, citizens forum, and this agenda is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have one, Nikki Keynes.
Nikki Keynes, I live here in the city. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm here to talk about honesty and transparency, and if you think I'm questioning your honesty, it's because what I feel is a lack of transparency. I've spoken before the council before, and to date, nothing has been resolved. My case in point was a November 9th issue regarding the actual qualified date of any election or whatever. It was brought up whether it was legal and if it was within the boundaries of the city charter. So we're talking about a May versus November date. This council and the city attorney totally avoided giving answers or giving any kind of explanation. A consensus or a majority of this council does not make it so. Regarding another issue with the Public Safety Council Committee, I'm sure they did their best, but the $45 million amount, I don't believe was based on speculation or specs and guidelines that was given by the council. And I say this because the public thought it was going to be a single-story, 46,000 to 48,000 square foot building. But I have, the specs that were given were based on two-story buildings, and the architectural firm, I'm not sure if it was the one that the city planners spoke highly of, but I hope it gets passed, and if the voters do vote that it goes, I would suggest that we go to another architectural firm. Lastly, this, the Public Safety Committee meetings were held publicly. I attended at least three. Word around town is that they gave us all plenty of time to ask questions, and I say that's a lie. I was there, no committee members, and no members of the city staff present ever turned and asked us for our input. So the lack of transparency, when you say we had input, is just not there. I say if you want to encourage honesty and transparency, I, as a voter, would like to see it put into practice. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And now we come to the consent agenda. These items will be considered together, and unless a council member or citizen pulls an item. Ms. McLennan, are there any items pulled by individuals who have signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, 4A.
Okay, 4A, so let's move.
And I'll request to pull 4B.
Okay, so 4A, 4B are pulled. All right, then let's vote on, if we're ready, 4C, 4D. Do I have a motion on those two?
I'm glad that we will, that we adopt 4C and 4D as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hands, okay, and it is unanimous. Now let's come back to 4A. We have someone to speak to that?
Katie Chapman-Hanna. Good evening, council. My name is Katie Chapman-Hanna. I live at 1343 Bandera Highway. To those council members.
Somebody help her with that microphone real quick.
Yes, thank you. Can y'all hear me? Thank you very much. To those council members withstanding in regard to 4A, namely Mayor Blackburn, Councilwoman Eichner, Councilwoman Hughes, I ask that you consider how vitally important it is for Kerrville residents to have confidence that their council will uphold our city charter. I thank you all very much for your time. I just wanted to add that into record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. I'm actually, I'm sincere when I say I'm disappointed that I have to be here today on this particular topic. I was hoping, maybe naively, that the problem would be corrected, but it has not. As I emailed you earlier, you have the backup for this, but basically, you're looking at a resolution to potentially pass order in an election, and the first two whereas is kind of proved my point. The first whereas establishes, points out that the charter establishes a two-year term of office for each council member until a successor is elected. Second whereas is totally false. It says the terms of office for Mayor, Councilmember Place Three, Councilmember Place Four, will expire in May of 2022. As I explained, or as I gave to you earlier, truly, I mean, I would have added two whereas's in between, which simply say, whereas Texas Election Code 2.001 requires all elective offices be filled by a candidate receiving a plurality of a vote of a properly-held election. And whereas case law in Spears v. Davis and Secretary of State Election Division confirms, term of office when not fixed as to the date of its beginning and ending by constitution or statute begins in the case of elective offices on the date of election, even if the person is sworn in later for service. Whereas Governor's Proclamation has no force in effect after November 3rd, 2020, be it resolved, this is, holding an election in May would be against the charter. As far as the beginning of the, or the expiration of the terms, each one of the three that are apparently up for election were elected on November 3rd, 2020. According to all rules in the Secretary of State's Election Division, that marks the beginning of the term. Without any separate rule providing a different term length, you go with the charter, which is what's in your resolution. So you're effectively violating the charter by, if you order this election. I would hope that you would realize the problem with pulling forward with something that's likely to be overturned by an independent judge. And to Ms. Chapman-Hanna, who's filed, and Ms. Eichner, who's filed, and Ms. Hughes has filed, and various people, they're going to be asked to move forward with campaigning on something that's likely to be overturned. Who's going to help them reimburse whatever costs are involved there? I find it absurd that you would move forward with this. You know, this could have been. You know, this could have been dealt with, as it was pointed out two months ago, if we just simply had said, you're right, we made a mistake, let's correct it. You still have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the citizen speakers.
Alright, any further discussion on this matter?
I do. I have a few questions and then points to hit on. My first question, a little bit off of that, but to staff. Why did we wait so long to order this election? Because it seems that the election process is already underway. When people are filing their candidate applications with the city secretary, the city posted it on our social media and websites, the dates and the deadlines to the election, and we're only 10 days away from the candidate filing deadline. And this resolution was listed on our pending agenda list for December, but it was deferred a couple of times until today. So, couple of questions. Why did we wait until now? And who gave the authority to begin the election process before council actually ordered the election?
Mr. Hoppe, would you deal with that?
Sure. We've got some specific statutory elements in regards to calling of the May election, particularly in regards to other items, in particular the bond issuance that we've discussed with council over numerous months. And so we aligned both of those decision-making points to tonight for the council.
Okay. And that makes, okay, I appreciate that answer. Page two of the agenda bill, I'm going to try to go through this because I have limited time. Page two, the agenda bill says that there are going to be two state constitutional amendments included on the ballot, and I see that on section three of the resolution indicates that we're going to have four different polling places, one for each precinct. So are the constitutional amendments related to why we're going to have those four different locations? And do we have to like go with that measure if there's another measure on the ballot? Or can we do it separately? I have no problem with it, just curious.
Yeah, City Secretary McLennan can elaborate, but essentially by partnering up with the county, which will also be holding elections in our area due to those constitutional amendments, helps defer taxpayer resources because we're able to basically do a joint election agreement with them.
Okay.
Which is also on your agenda tonight.
Right, right, okay. And then hopefully this will be the last thing and I'll make a final statement, but last thing we discuss is upcoming election. I try to get answers as to why staff believes we need to hold our election in May and not November. And I did it all at a public meeting so the public would be aware of it too. So I'm going to try again and see if we can get those answers. The biggest thing is the Secretary of State Election Division has responded to why we should hold the election in November. So if I can get a response from staff, why is that incorrect? What they're saying.
Mr. Hayes, and first, do you have it in writing, the Secretary of State's office has said we ought to have the election in November?
It was provided to us from questions from a citizen. It was provided to us in an email, yes.
What email and when?
Today.
Today?
Yes.
I haven't seen that email.
Okay. It was given to us and I know the mayor has too, so if we can just get a response to that.
Hayes?
I haven't seen the email. I don't know what the Secretary of State was asked. You know, I went through my records today. This issue has been ongoing since December of 2020. I think I have researched it two or three times since that occasion. I'm comfortable that having the election in May is legal.
And also, cities around the state are not changing to a November election. They're doing their elections in May. And, you know, the two-year issue, in May I will have served 48 months, a long term and a short term, but it's still two years. And.
Well, and a final statement. Not only can I not vote for the resolution because it's improper on its face and the date that we're ordering the election, but also because section one of the resolution says the findings above are hereby found to be true and correct. And one of the findings is the second whereas clause that says the terms of office for mayor, councilman place three and councilman place four will expire in May 2020. Unfortunately, that finding is not correct in the best of my belief. And to my constituents and to council, I know there are differing opinions on when we're supposed to hold our next election, but each one of your elected representatives, each one of us has taken an oath, an oath that we will, to the best of our ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. And so that's exactly what I intend to do. So pursuant to the state constitution, the laws of the state of Texas and our city charter, I move to deny ordinance number 09-2022 and instruct staff to return to council at our next regular meeting with the resolution to order the election for the positions of mayor, place three and place four to be held on November 8th, 2022, and to take all actions necessary and proper to conduct said election.
Alright, is there a second to that motion? If not, is there a motion in regard to the resolution?
I will move that we adopt resolution number 09-2022 as presented.
Alright, is there a second?
I will second.
And Mayor, due to the significance of this item pursuant to rule 4.5, I request a roll call vote.
Sure. Ms. McLennan, will you call?
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Clarkson.
Yes.
Mayor Byper.
Yes.
Councilmember Eichner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Okay, alright. All in favor of that motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? And any opposed, by the same sign as 4-1? Alright, now we go to 4B. Do we have anybody to speak to that?
Councilmember Garcia pulled in.
I was just curious, is this agreement designed to also have the city conduct the bond election as well? In addition to like the city council election?
There's no difference from a cost standpoint. Our ballot is, you know, essentially a separate balloted item from the constitutional amendments, but whether it's, you know, three items on the ballot or four items on the ballot, there's no cost difference, if that's what you're asking.
So like, so in my understanding, usually previously, we don't, I mean, I can't remember the last time we had a bond election, but, so seeing this is my first time, I'm just trying to understand, will this election agreement cover, I understand it's going to cover the, for the county to conduct our city council election, but later on, we're going to be looking at an ordinance to approve a bond election. So is this agreement also going to cover the county to conduct that bond election as well?
It does, and it's, essentially the agreement is just the county incorporating a ballot for the city.
Okay.
So it's not based off of how many items we have on the ballot or any type of, you know, multiple initiatives.
Sure, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense, I appreciate it. That just, that answer determined how I was going to vote on this. So seeing as I voted no on that one, I'm going to be voting yes on this one because I have nothing, there's no problem with the agreement and of course, I do want our bond election to go forward, so, just so there's no confusion there.
Okay, do we have then a motion on 4B?
I will move that we approve the agreement for a joint election between the city of Kerrville and Kerr County for May 7th of 2022.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. And it carries unanimously. Alright, now, let's go to the information discussion in regard to the most recent winter storm. Could somebody tell me how they named them? I mean, last time it was jury, this time it's a houndman? Are these the children of the governor?
So, I do not know, Ms. Mayor, so I'm not sure. But I do know I had a PowerPoint that I just had to change a few names to, so that was it. I'm going to give a brief update on Winter Storm 2022 in regards to last week and give you kind of an idea of our response for the city and things that we saw out there. At the same time during that, I'll bring up some department directors to speak specifically on their department on issues that they saw out there too. So a little bit of the timeline, what we saw last week on Tuesday. So we started coordinating with the Kerr County Emergency Management Coordinator to open up the Warming Center at the First United Methodist Church. We've had meetings about two weeks prior to that in coordination with the Kerr County Emergency Management, First United Methodist Church, Red Cross, so talking about the winter update and potential winter storm. Not this one specifically, but just things that we needed to do in preparation for that. We've also had meetings with the Peterson Hospital, also talking about a potential winter storm. So we've already had the conversations ahead, so it really kind of helped in regards to opening up the Warming Center at the First United Methodist Church. The National Weather Service started to become a little more confident with their winter storm prediction as they got a little closer. Wednesday the 2nd, the City Emergency Operations Center, so we opened up at level three increased readiness, so now we're watching, we're starting to do a little more preparation out there. We're coordinating with San Antonio and watching some of the Department, Texas Department Emergency Management, watching their situation reports that are also coming out. The Kerrville Independent School District, Kerr County Offices, both closed for Thursday. And then we got a report later in the day, that National Weather Service reported there were potential up to a quarter inch of ice and a quarter inch of sleet by the end of the day. So Thursday the 3rd, we did a change in the mornings, we upgraded that to a level two. So this is a virtual opening or a partial opening, so we did virtually this time, and this required all department to report out for their department and provide briefings at 10:30 and 1600 every day. 0500 in the morning, Kerrville Police Department was out, they were out in the streets, so they reported road closures and the National Weather Service was off and we got up to a half inch of ice and sleet since midnight and continued sleet, as y'all noticed when you got up in the morning. We notified all city personnel via Rave, so Rave, as you all are aware, is our mass communication, so we had that up and running last week internally, so we were able to utilize that to notify all city personnel of a delayed start and then ultimately we closed, we closed the remainder of the day. Streets started reporting that road conditions were deteriorating quickly on Thursday. Kerrville Independent School District and Kerr County, they also closed the office for Friday. And then that night, we saw single-digit temperatures overnight and that continued freeze. Other timeline, coming on Friday, so we were still operating at a level two for the Emergency Operations Center. All departments were continuing to report out twice a day, 10:30 and 1600. We were getting reports from the Streets Department, so at that point, they were out at 5 o'clock in the morning, monitoring the bridges, the streets to give us information from the EOC and other departments so we can make decisions from there. We notified all city personnel in the morning, so via Rave again, so delayed start and ultimately end up closing. Mother Nature was good to us that day, so they welcomed us with some sunshine all day. We were only supposed to get an hour, we got a full day of sunshine. That really helped, it increased that radiant heat, melted some of the ice on the roads, turned it into slush. We had a little bit of an issue there because we had more ice than expected, and then we had another good refreeze overnight, so which imposed more challenges. Saturday the 5th, we were still operating at level two in the morning, so we had our final briefing in the morning at 10:30. Temperatures started to come above freezing, as y'all know, so fall caused a few water breaks and a few broken sprinkler systems overall, and I'll let them talk a little bit more about that in their departments itself. Public safety, so the fire department responded to 75 calls for service over this two-day period. So we increased our staffing and capacity to respond for an additional ambulance overnight and the brush truck overnight also. If y'all remember that from last year, that's our four-wheel-drive truck, so that can really, it's not brush fires, but at that point, we were allowed to get closer to the patients. A lot of time, the ambulances themselves, they would get as close as they could, the guys would go on foot from there, carrying their bags, everything else they need to get close to the resident and then bring them back in. They helped on a couple of calls, they were able to respond also and get us a lot closer for that. So that was a bit of a, that was quite a challenge. We had four ambulance slide off the road that night due to the ice, so that was quite a challenge. We had one, we had to leave overnight on Thursday night. We couldn't get to it, it got too dangerous, it was 10:30 at night, so we pulled what we needed off. We had four total, we got three back, so, and then we had one stuck that we abandoned overnight. We came back the next day on Friday and our record was helped to get, helped us get that out overall. Good news is, from a fire department standpoint, so of course, real proud everyone went home safe, so I had no injuries across the department, always proud of that response, so and only damage was a bumper, so that was it. So a couple of minor scrapes, we may have a pinched wiring, but I'll take that as far as a winter storm and four ambulance sliding, so for the day. Police Department Communication Center, I'll defer this to Chief McCall in a second, but they answered 1,258 calls during the day, they're non-emergency calls, so they had 333 911 calls. And Chief McCall?
From police department perspective, you know, one thing that I'd be remiss without saying is, thank you to all our citizens for heeding the warnings for the most part, staying home. We saw a tremendous reduction in call volume over those days within the city proper, where we did see issues was on I-10 and the issues that developed there. We requested that I-10 be closed on Thursday evening. That obviously was not granted and we continued to pile traffic on that roadway. Some folks, I think as everyone's heard, were out there for hours and hours, sitting on the road in deadlock traffic. So we have some review to do there and get a better understanding of tech stop procedures and how we can go about trying to avoid that in the future. Really developed into somewhat of a dangerous situation there and actually had the fatal crash that night where we lost a local citizen due to the ice on the roadway. During the two days, we responded to 83 calls for service as compared to a regular day over two days. That's a pretty low call volume for us and we really didn't respond to a lot of crashes within the city. Again, most of the stuff we saw up on the interstate that we responded to as far as crash-wise, so very, just kind of reiterate, thank you to our citizens for doing the right thing and staying home. And really, on I-10, I'd be remiss without mentioning Kerrville County Sheriff's Office and all the work that they did up there. They poured resources into trying to take care of the folks up there. We're only responsible from up to 508 to the 513 and they have the rest of the county where that road runs and they're really spread thin. We tried to assist where we could with issues in their area close to the city, but they were extremely busy trying to deal with those areas up there and kudos to them for all their hard work.
Chief, let me ask you one thing. You know, folks have said after they got up yesterday morning, found out about the, you know, the traffic on I-10 and they were stopped for hours and so forth, people saying, you know, could citizens have gone out there with food or something? I think I know the answer to that, but would you respond?
Yeah, we wouldn't really want to encourage that. We wouldn't want to put people into a position where they can injure themselves or create a more serious situation. We were doing our best to move up and down the area, doing welfare checks on the vehicles that were stopped to ensure no one there needed any assistance. And once the roadway did start moving, waking people up, getting the traffic flow moving, but, you know, great, that would be a fantastic thing to do, but on the flip side of that, it could create more problems for us out there on icy roads.
Well, somebody asked me if I as mayor should have been out there, and I said, you know what? Law enforcement, they know what to do, how to handle it, they don't need a mayor out there messing with stuff.
Thank you for staying home and staying warm.
Don't put enough warnings out on Facebook that people stayed off the road. So communicating like that is truly beneficial to saving lives.
Yeah, I think we'll just see that continue to improve with our Rave system as we roll that out to the public. That will be a, that will be a tool for us that we'll be able to contact and really press information at the, really at the push of a button to a large array of folks. And Chief Maloney's carrying that load on his shoulders, putting that program together, and I think it's going to be extremely beneficial for our community.
Okay, council questions, discussion?
Got a few more, man.
Good job.
Few more items.
Great job.
That's not all.
Just kind of, not all, so, just kind of add a little bit that the Kerr County Emergency Management was up and operational, so Kerr County Sheriff's Office, they work directly together. They're aware of the situation. Volunteer fire departments were out there on the interstate, so if there was a need of what they need to get out to them, so they were aware of that and that they did have those resources set aside for their. So a little brief report out, I'll be real brief on these, emergency management. As I said, we were getting daily updates from National Weather Service and Texas Department Emergency Management. We were monitored statewide, web EOC, so we're on there, so we check in with our status here in the city of Kerrville, that not only regionally can they see us, but also statewide. We had communications with Kerr County Emergency Management, Peterson Health Emergency Management, Red Cross Salvation Army and the Warming Center. So public information out there, we had 41 total posts before and during the winter storm. Two San Antonio legislations came down and so we both got our interview on that one. So we got interviewed for there. And traffic advisory, we got that up in the Doyle Community Center, so about the Warming Center, so we're going to continue to work on that, make sure that we get that information out for those who might need it, so they know where to go in the event, so continue to build on that. Infrastructure, Charby Tork and the IT, they were monitoring the internal, external phone systems, internet servers, any outages in the area. They set up virtual phone systems for City Hall. They set up virtual phone systems for City Hall, which we'll talk a little more in a second. They managed that rave software for us. Streets, they were nonstop. I, I can't say enough about streets. They were out there 5:00 AM in the morning, out there on the roads, giving us a report. So we had more information that we could provide and make decisions on. They were closing roads as needed, continually monitored, prepping bridge, roads, sidewalks, post storm. They were cleaning up ice on Holdsworth sidewalks. They, they came out of Fire Admin and they cleaned up the ice right in front of us that just didn't melt out. So, and they were assisting public safety as needed. So they helped us get to Hilltop, get out so that they're always very active and always engaged when we need them. Parks was there, so they were standby to assist streets, water, public safety, other departments. So if we need them, that they were ready to go. They were monitoring the safety of Kerrville Shriner Park guests that were out there. So they had relocated some of those to get out to the weather and single digits, not a time to camp, so or tent camp per se. So, so they were out there monitoring that closely. Garage was on standby, so we constantly coordinated with them. These are those daily report outs, so they were on standby for vehicles, damaged vehicles, generators, any other repairs that we were going to need, that just in time. City Secretary's Office Development Service, they were constantly manage, reviewed deadlines, meetings, public notice. So we still have that, that piece over the two days that we still need to continue on. I'll give a couple of key department report outs for this one. Public Works, the Water Department and City Administration, I'll let each director talk about that here. So they're probably on, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the proper level of funding. We had most of the tools that we needed just to do the job that we needed to do. And without y'all, that would have not, would have not happened 10 years ago. We, we didn't have all the tools we have, so thank you. Makes this a whole lot easier on our staff and also allows us to do our job. One of the main tools that we've had, that we've used in almost every department is heated shed or heated barns to keep our trucks in. So we started the preparation for this on, well, about fall, we start getting the water system ready. But on this particular event, we started on Tuesday with gassing up the trucks and putting the de-icer in the trucks and putting the gravel spreaders on the, on the, on the dump trucks themselves and getting that ready. Wednesday night, we went out and de-iced the roads. Tech Stop also was out de-icing some of their bridges here in town and spraying some brine solution on there. So we were all in conjunction with one another. We anticipated the freezing conditions and ice and things that happened about 3:00 AM in the morning. And sure enough, it was a little bit before that. And so Street Departments reported every morning, they went out at four o'clock and got the report ready for all of us to read. And at five o'clock, so we could have good decision making the next day and let everybody know what the road conditions were and how heavy the ice was and, and make some critical considerations as to what was going to happen with the city the next day. They worked on that, pulling, helping people out of ditches, pulling different vehicles back up onto the road, getting branches off the road, getting stop signs up that people have hit over the whole, over the whole course of the event. So Streets was out there the whole time until about Sunday, or excuse me, until about Saturday at, at noon is when we went back into normal operation with our Street Department. As far as the water, the utilities concerned, a lot less of an event than what last year was. An example is in, in wastewater collections, we had about 450 calls from our SCADA system last year. And this year, we got about 15. A lot of that is that the power stayed on. And so I think we get power failures, alarms, but that's kind of the variation that you can see. On our water side, we did, the Summit Tank, this one, this time was the only tank that we had any trouble with. Then one of our transducers froze up there, but you know, we've been putting in a new strategy where we're testing it with two different strategies or two different methods for checking tanks, tank level. So we were able to find that real, real quickly. Nobody lost service and really we only had about two breaks. Both of them were at the water treatment plant, one on our GAC plant and one was a backwash pipe that broke over there. So everything went really well. A few broken sprinklers around town, smaller pipes like that, nothing real big froze. So really, kudos to, to our guys for staying out there all night and being willing to face the storm. And thank y'all again for, for supporting our budget request. I know some of those things we asked for, it's like, man, you use this once a year. This was that once a year that, that we needed, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you Stewart. Okay. Berens?
Good afternoon, evening. So a quick report out on the utility billing and finance side. So we have an emergency operations team with each one of us has our own area that, that we're assigned to. And so if you remember in 2021 for winter storm Uri, they said, yeah, it's going to freeze for a few days and it'll be all right. Well, we saw what happened and so we took a proactive approach. So about midweek, we were already thinking, okay, what do we need to do? How do we need to staff up? And our biggest concern being customer needs in the field from the utility billing side. So fortunately, Thursday and Friday, we were able to take phone calls from home. So two of us were doing that to keep our customers answered and questions answered like that. We did have meter techs on the ground, so responding to customer needs that way. So we were dispatching those actually from home, so that went really well. So Tony and his crew fortunately only had 15 customer water line breaks. I think again, that goes back to Stewart's comment about the power. And if we have power, then water keeps flowing most of the time. So that was good news for us. On Saturday, we did staff the office and so we had four staff come into the office to just be proactive in thinking that as it thawed out a little bit, that we were going to get more of those calls. Fortunately, we didn't have very many, but we do definitely want to recognize our staff for stepping up and saying, sure, I'll, I'll be there on Saturday if that's what our customers need. So that was really good and we also had crew in the field all day on Saturday, again, till about three o'clock. We also, from the utility side, we pushed bill due dates and we pushed disconnect dates. So we didn't obviously want customers trying to get out, bring payments to us and those kind of things. So Stuart Cunha's pushed out a press release about that and we saw some call volume decrease from that too, so. And as the mayor made reference earlier to the disaster declaration, so one of the things that we did on the finance side was set up a project code basically to track any expenses, including labor that was extraordinary specifically to the winter storm. And we learned this last year going through the FEMA process for federal funding reimbursement, that all the things that we needed to do to track and keep very specific records for what we spent, whether it was labor or materials or supplies or any event that might happen. And so we're tracking those in there for the possibility of, of future funding from either TIDAM or, or federal funding from FEMA. So looking at those opportunities as we move forward. So overall, I'll also like to thank our IT Department, I'm sure y'all know they keep us rolling. Without them, we couldn't have done what we did remotely and been able to work when we weren't in the office. So a big shout out to Charby and our Dean for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, what we learned from winter storm Uri was that our citizens need us even if, even if there's a winter storm out there. So we became concerned about potential water line breaks, questions regarding trash pickup, and then just other general questions that citizens might have as the weather started to improve. So Ring Central is an app that allows us to forward phone numbers to it that can be answered anywhere from a laptop or a computer or an iPad. And we activated Ring Central for city operations on Friday, February 4th at noon and forwarded the City Hall main line and the utility billing main line to Ring Central. There were four of us answering calls remotely from our homes and we answered 111 phone calls from noon, noon until 5:30 PM on Friday, as well as a couple of hours on Saturday as well. So it, it was a good thing that we had that available.
Thank you.
The disaster declaration, I think you answered a little bit of this earlier, Mr. Mayor, but it's a local state of disaster during the winter storm impacted city operations, travel and area businesses. Positions the city to request financial assistance for both individual local jurisdictions if they become available. And this also allows us to notify TIDAM of the situation here in Kerrville. As you heard from the other departments and things that we've done, so these are mitigation actions that we identified during winter storm Uri post. So we were able to put those in place more proactively and really in reference to what may be. It didn't, I'm glad it didn't. I'm glad the, the power stayed on, the water was constant, we didn't have near the, the distance. Mother Nature was good to us on Friday, so real, real thankful with that one. Any questions on the disaster declaration?
Questions?
Okay, key takeaways for this one. Early activation of the EOC is a success. That's something we're going to continue to do, we're kind of going to continue to build on. So we're built off four different levels that we're going to see. You'll see more of that moving forward this year. Some of that will be a little bit with the rave, the mass communications and how we're going to respond to that. So that's great with the full department report outs. It provides key intel and situational awareness to respond to the needs that the public infrastructure and the citizens need. The other success was the rave mass communications, so thanks for that one moving forward. Now we can communicate with city staff and all city employees with critical and timely information immediately. So we can get that information out, which is, was key to that success. Other success with the Warming Center, so it opened up during the day. Real positive, that was a change from last year. We did have the shelters, but I think the Warming Center is something moving forward, so we're going to kind of build off that a little bit. I can't say enough or give enough topi thanks to Pastor David Payne, so the Palmers, Tina Box and all the staff over there that welcomed anyone that needed to come over there. Not only were they a warming center, which is typically just a warm building you go in, they were a welcome center. So they had food, they were, they had lunch, they had everything available, cookies and coffee too, so, or so I heard. Other success with the public notifications, so to reduce the number of accidents, falls, other incidents, repair citizens, stay home, stay safe. That, that, this was key. It keeps our responders safe, it's getting that information just in time. Please follow our lead, so when we're asking for those, it does make a difference. So it makes a difference for us, allows us to get out there. Our, our number of car accidents were minimal, our number of falls were minimal comparatively to a year ago. Improvement for us, so we're going to continue to improve the means of public notifications over the next few months. We'll see more of that to keep our citizens informed and safe during disasters and other situations. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, I thought the communication was super, just super. And that everyone should have had some way to find out what was going on. So thank you for that.
I think, I'm be real quick, but once again, I think we see the generosity of this community. First Methodist, what they did with the Warming Center, I think the winter storm last year, for instance, Calvary Temple Shelter that they set up. And Shriner made housing available to first responders that couldn't get home during that storm. A lot of folks step up and want to help, that's great.
It's that neighbor helping neighbor, so.
A little bit of Kerrville kindness.
It is, and I said during the interview with the San Antonio, I don't think they understood quite what that meant, so.
All right.
Very nice.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, Ms. McElhaney, would you read that in?
Ordinance number 2022 dash zero seven. An ordinance calling a bond election to be held in the city of Kerrville, Texas for the purpose of providing funds for the development of a public safety facility for the city to include accommodations to serve the police department and fire administration, emergency operations center, municipal court, information technology department and related functions. Making provision for the conduct of a joint election and resolving other matters related to such election. We do have four citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Ms. Berens?
Hi again. So I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the bond election ordinance and answer any questions that you may have. Oh, there he is. Ahead of myself there. Also with me to point out tonight, Ms. Ann Berger Injakin is here from Hilltop Securities, our financial advising firm, and also Jay Juarez, who's one of our bond councils. So if we have any questions that I'm not able to answer, brought the experts with me tonight, so. Okay, just remember, you know, this bond election ordinance is just about giving community members an opportunity to vote on moving forward, or not moving forward with the public safety facility as you directed us to do. Okay, so just a brief overview. The public safety facility bond election committee was created by the council by resolution 48 dash 2021 on October 26th of 2021 for the purpose of analyzing the feasibility and developing the public safety facility and possible financing, maybe by the issuance of the obligation bonds that we're talking about tonight. In January of '22, that committee brought to council their recommendations, confirmation of space needs, the 69,000 square feet, and then also a recommendation to send to election a bond, general bond obligation of $45 million. Additional resolution will be required should this ordinance pass and we'll discuss that. You have that at your place as well. So primarily ordinance 2022 dash oh seven authorizes council to do a couple of things. To authorize an election to be held, to determine if council is authorized to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed an aggregate principal amount of $45 million specifically for the purpose of purchasing land easements, rights of way or any other real property and designing, constructing and equipping a public safety facility to include police, fire administration, emergency operations center, municipal court and information technology. Also would authorize council to contract with the county and its election officers to conduct all aspects of the election, which would be held jointly with other political elections on May 7th of 2022, as we discussed before. So the ballot would basically prevent, permit voters to vote for or against. The item on the ballot will appear as follows, and you have this in your packet. The issuance of city of Kerrville, Texas general obligation bonds for a public safety facility and the levying of a tax and payment thereof in an amount not to exceed $45 million. So actions from this point, so each council member will vote for or against in a roll call vote for ordinance 2022 dash oh seven, allowing the city secretary to record each vote. And again, if approved, council will need to consider approval of the resolution, a resolution oh eight dash 2022 expressing official intent to incur debt and also to utilize any of that debt to reimburse city for any expenses that may have already been incurred for this project. So next steps, if approved, public safety facility bond election would be held on May 7th, 2022. If the bond is approved by voter, staff will work with Hilltop Securities to begin steps to sell bonds. Estimation would be that bonds would be issued in July or August of 2022. Happy to take any questions or refer questions to our visitors.
Counsel, questions?
I don't have a question. I think what I would like for us to do is to say again that the 45 million, it's not just the physical building, but it's what it will take to equip that building inside.
That's correct.
And I think there's been some misunderstanding about that. So I think it's very important that people understand, it's the whole package.
Correct, and it's in the bond ordinance in that language as well.
Okay.
Is that true? Because during the meetings of the bond committee, they said that, and our contractor said that the amount and everything that was provided with the final recommendation would be as if you were to take the building and tip it over and shake it, nothing would come out because it would only be the structure and the land and everything else.
There were some discussions when they were talking about the pricing from all of the different comparative cities and how those fell out and what was included in each one of those. But we talked multiple times about this being a turnkey project. So it would include all, every essential element of startup.
I think what you're referencing is was the different, the distinction that we talked about between the construction cost and the total project cost. And as you may recall, what the consultant elaborated on was they provided for construction costs and then roughly a 28% estimate over that, which includes architectural fees, engineering fees, real estate allowance, as well as the FFNE, which is the fixtures, furniture and equipment. So that is included within that overall cost of 45 million. Did that answer both of your questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you. On page four of the ordinance, is it page four? Yes. Looking at section eight, it's the one, two, three, four, five, sixth line down. When we're looking at the debt rate, should that not be 0.0735? Like what's in our budget book?
Our current debt rate is zero. Our current red debt rate is 735.
So should that be reflected in that number instead of .5093?
Is it the difference between the interest and sinking and the, and the general? The maintenance and operations?
Well, our overall tax rate is .5093 and I think that's what it's referencing.
Well, it says the ad liborum debt service tax rate.
That should be, sorry, Jay Juarez with Call, Parker, and Horton.
Yes.
That was an error on our part, it should reflect that figure, you're correct, just your ad liborum debt service tax rate. So we could make that correction and revise a resolution. This has been discussed tonight and we'll have the final election ordinance reflect that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Jay.
And I have a, I, I came up, I expressed a couple of ideas last time. And I may not have done it correctly. That would have actually probably gone through what I was thinking about. But I know there are some concerns about the impact that it's going to have on the taxpayers. And I guess what I said last time is a ranked choice voting, that's probably not the phrase I should have used. But instead have different phases or different bond ordinances. For example, we can all agree that we need a new facility for our police department. So that can be one bond or we can also include the fire administration in that one if it's determined that it's a number one priority need. And then a second bond can be And then a second bond can be issued to include the municipal court, and then a third to include the IT, IT department. Is that not something that we could do? And, I know, because right now, the way it's, it's posed, and the, the way it's proposed, it's an all or nothing deal, and the citizens will be saying yes to the whole thing or no to the whole thing, but some may agree, yeah, we need a, a new place for our police department, and maybe even fire administration, but maybe not municipal court, and maybe not IT, it's totally up to them, I'm not speaking for the voters, but that could be what they're thinking, is there a way to do that and kind of phase it in?
Yeah, so I, I think you're, you know, really within your charge, you know, you asked your public safety facility bond committee to look at that, and, and look at the all options, really look at all of those facilities, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think what their analysis, you know, proved out was that, yes, all three of those facilities are in need right now. Several of them, one is in the lease facility, that really does not meet their needs. Municipal court is in a temporary facility that they've been temporarily in for over fifteen years, and certainly, I think we're all aware of the needs at the existing police facility. So all, all three really are, are subpar, and where they are, and their recommendation to you was to move forward, there are benefits to having all of those facilities done right now, because there is a need for them, and it makes sense for those to be on the same campus, and in, in many ways, probably under the same roof, because there are efficiencies within the scales of operation.
And I think, Mr. Garcia, if we start, if you tried to break it down like that, we're defeating the purpose of what we're after. We waited all, a long time for this, and we have an opportunity now to put it, and it needs to be all together.
Well, you know, it's, I think we could go either way, and I think either way, you know, it's an all or nothing deal, or we can at least give the voters and taxpayers, they could have a say on what, in their assessment, the primary need, and the additional components, since they're the ones financially impacted by it. And then last thing, since I guess my time is out. With the bond and the project as proposed, we're expecting this facility to last us, what, ten, fifteen years from now, like expansion?
No, actually, it was much longer than that.
Yeah, the, the, what the, what the consultant really indicated was that, you know, that is a reasonable timeframe to be able to look at the horizon of logical growth for the community. Beyond that, it's really pretty difficult to forecast where, where you're going to be at. They did include within, as you recall, the recommendation to you, the bond committee recommended developing some shell space, which is unfinished space, because it, it's, it's less expensive to go ahead and put a roof and a foundation now, and then finish out spaces depending on flexibly what you may need. Maybe you need a little bit more fire room fifteen years from now, maybe you need a little bit more police or investigative room fifteen years from now, you just don't know exactly what your needs may be operationally, but they did recommend including that, you know, kind of cushion space now, because it's cheaper to build than it will be from fifteen years from now, for sure. Does that answer your question?
One question, the, the rate, we, we don't know the rate until we go to the bond sale, whether it's fixed, flexible, whatever rate?
Right, it, it will be a fixed rate. However, we can't speak to exactly what that rate is going to be, and we're estimating right now around three point seven five. I mean, if we were to issue today, it's lower than that, but we really can't say what that's going to look like at the time of issuance, so.
It's going to be like a parameter sale, the way that we do for our certificates of obligation?
Right, so, Anne, do you want to speak to that? I'll let Anne speak to that, because we've done a lot, had a lot of discussion about this exact topic.
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to be before you this evening. My name is Ann Berger, and I'm with Hilltop Securities. So to answer your question, councilwoman, is basically it, you are just putting out to the community the amount relative to the not to exceed for the bond election of the forty-five million dollars, and we, we apply a projected interest rate, we basically took what we thought you could get today, and the rule of thumb I've used for thirty-five years is I add ten basis points a month for every year in between when we run the numbers and when the, when the actual bond issue would occur, should the election pass. That's eighty, that's eight months, so I added about eighty basis points, and that's how we came up with the three seven five. But we are in a very unprecedented time, from an interest rate perspective and an inflationary perspective, as we saw after Chairman Powell's last FOMC meeting comments back on January twenty-sixth. But based on historical numbers, based on, like I said, an eighty percent basis point interest rate cushion, we believe that the three point seven five is an appropriate number to use, but the citizens in the community will be voting on the dollar amount, and that will ultimately be the guiding decision should the election pass. And then what will happen was, once that's done, we wouldn't do a parameters order, we would actually sell the bonds and then come to the council with what the results would be, again, should the election pass.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, we have four speakers, I believe.
Yes, sir, Peggy McKay. Peggy McKay, Kerrville. My question, why have so many questions? Because there's so much information in various places, but on the purchase of the land, as I understand it, nothing has been chosen to date, no location is chosen to date. But have we considered an exchange of city property for a parcel, another parcel of land, which maybe we could have done where the Lennar Homes is going and used rather than put the public safety facility on there, use that parcel as an exchange for a better location for the public service or the public safety? So my question is, if we are not going to build on city property, can we at least consider using some portion of city property that we might have in an exchange, which would lower some of our costs? And then I had some questions on, the forty-five million dollars keeps coming up, and sometimes I hear the furnishings are included, and sometimes they're, they're not. And I, I don't, I know that seven A follows, which is related to this, and I have more questions on that one, but I, I didn't understand, I couldn't hear everything about the different tax rate, or the twenty-five percent, or the twenty-eight percent for engineering and real estate, I don't know how you're relating that to the forty-five million. And also, in measure A, it says we would have issued a, more than one series, perhaps. Why would we be getting more than one series of bonds? Wouldn't it just be one series at forty-five million?
Go ahead. Yes, ma'am, it is standard in election language to include one or more bond issues. The reason that is done is, is multifold. One, when you issue bonds, you have to sign a certificate saying that you have reasonable expectations that ninety-five percent of the bond proceeds will be spent in three years. So sometimes entities make a decision to break it into two series of bonds, so that they can meet that federal requirement of the timing. So it's just to give flexibility, if you don't know exactly what the draw schedule and the construction schedule is going to be in project completion. It doesn't mean it has to be more than one, it's just to make sure you can be in compliance with federal requirements.
Okay.
Okay, and also on the furnishings, are we assured that the furnishings are included in the, the bond total?
Mr. Hoppe, would you go over that again?
Yes, again, the, the difference between the estimated construction cost and total project cost, the total project cost is estimated to include fixtures, furniture, and equipment.
Okay, all right. Now, Mr. Harrison, chairman of the bond committee, would you comment on the, what the committee looked at in terms of exchanging city land for another plot and so forth? Can you comment on that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure Mrs. McKay is done with her questions first, if that's okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to get those questions answered.
That's all right, the rest I'll bring up in seven A.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor and council, bond committee was not asked to look at any property. Our charter was to, to evaluate whether or not we needed a new facility, we did that, we made a recommendation to you.
Okay.
So we were not asked to look at any property issues at all.
All right, thank you, thank you, okay. All right, other, another speaker?
George Broody.
George Broody, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So it's already been asked, but I just want to point out, again, so, because this is actually the second document that you guys were being asked to approve that was presented to you that wasn't actually accurate as to form. In regards to what he was presenting about the debt service rate, it's, it's not just what was reflected there, it's the, the law actually says that you must distinctly state the debt service rate, and so the fact that it wasn't there was a little bit problematic. Now, this project was, is being presented with what I would call a dangerously high price tag, that will require nearly twenty percent tax increase to all taxpayers without frozen taxes. And isn't, as Mr. Garcia pointed out, an all or nothing proposition, where the critical need of the police station is repairs, renovations, or rebuild, are being linked to the more discretionary municipal court, fire administration, and IT projects. If the citizens want to meet the critical need, they're being forced to buy off on the entire project, which is dangerous. I'm not saying that it's impossible, but you're, you're gambling with the, the possibility that people will balk at a twenty percent tax increase. And keep in mind that one of the committee members made a comment when they presented this, if, I think, I think I'm quoting, if you can get it by the voters, when I heard that, it sounded like if you could sneak it by, now, that's not what he meant, but it is, you're going to have to sell that, and I, I mean, me personally, we're being, we're going to ask one project, a twenty percent tax increase. That's pretty steep, whether you, whether you break it down monthly as one lunch, one meal per, it's still pretty high. It's going to be at least fifteen, sixteen, and when you allocate out to the, the frozen people, it's going to be getting you close to the twenty, over forty years. So that's pretty, pretty steep. And then one of the questions, I mean, if we can ask him, it's been asked about the, I wouldn't call it phasing, I would call it à la carding, this deal where you could have put police station, you know, to break it down so that the voters could have had options. Did the committee look at that and just, I mean, very much, seriously, or, or was that just not even discussed? Thanks.
Barbara Dool.
Barbara Dool Ferguson, Dry Hollow, here in Kerrville. As one of the public safety bond committee members, I was unable to be here in your January meeting, I was isolating with COVID. And so anyway, I wanted to take this opportunity, since this was coming up this evening, to voice a couple of my concerns, observations, from serving on the committee. And first of all, I'd like to say that all the committee members were, you know, want to thank all of them for their time, and this in no way reflects on their efforts. But before the council makes the decision regarding this proposed bond election, a couple of things I wanted to mention was, contrary to media accounts, the committee had met five times between November eighth and January third. That's a very limited amount of time to discuss a forty-five million dollar issue for our community, and as George said, with impacts up, going up to twenty percent tax increases, five times. The committee charter from the council allowed for one professional consultant firm from the DFW area, Metroplex, who has built many such facilities up in that area, visited their website, they have beautiful, grand, majestic, public safety facilities that they have built, something any city would be proud of, if it has a tax base like Frisco or Plano, but not Kerrville. The committee members asked for figures from other projects, so we could compare them to these estimates we were given from this architectural firm in, in the DFW area. They were said they could find them, they could find comparables, but those firms, those figures were never provided to us. When we'd come back to our next meeting, those figures weren't there. Making such a large financial decision with only one source of information is nothing, nothing less than foolish. If the council had or has additional information, why wasn't it provided to the committee? And even now, although the committees were defunct and were no longer functioning, if the council has additional information about other facilities that were built on perhaps a more modest scale, a scale more fitting to a small town, of facilities like down the road, on the way into Bandera, even our sheriff's department that was built, was built on a much different kind of scale than what we're talking about here. And I would encourage the council to use that information to reconsider this forty-five million dollar cost. The committee had, asked about a previous study that was released two years, just two years ago. This study was done on this exact same item, a public safety facility that combined the different departments. That study was never released until during our committee, when someone made a public information request, that that study become public. At that point in time, the committee was provided with that study. That study came out and said that they thought they could do a facility similar to the one we were looking at for about twenty-three million dollars. However, it was smaller, and after we got information from our police and fire departments and the other, and the municipal court, et cetera, they saw a need for some additional space. That space may be very well warranted, however, I think what we are looking at is a wish list. This is a, this would be great, let's do this, this is the top of the line, and yes, it is more effective to do everything all at once, just like it's more effective for me to buy a house and put the pool in, write it when I'm building it. But do I need the pool? Maybe not.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Dool, you were on the committee, and the committee was unanimous in its recommendation, you, you voted for it?
I voted for the forty-five million in an initial thing, I did not vote for the final thing. Contrary to what the media said, it was not a unanimously signed committee agreement that came to you. I was out with COVID, and I did not sign it, and when I read the minutes of the meeting, where we had requested that they, they, they make certain recommendations to the council in their final, in their final submittal to you, I read those minutes, and that final recommendation did not include the recommendations that we had asked for, that the committee asked for. So I did not sign that, because it was not what we had discussed.
Miss Corrigan?
That was my question, I just remember being at that meeting, and the question being asked, you approved the forty-five million dollars to recommend to council, and you said yes, so that was my question, why you didn't bring that up to the committee, since you were a committee member at that time?
I did bring it up to the committee.
But I'm just remembering when the question was asked, and you said yes, that's what I'm remembering.
I did vote for the forty-five million, and I do think we need a new facility, I entirely support, but I do not want a gold-plated deal here, and I think that's what we're looking at. I want this bond to pass, so therefore, I would recommend that the council do everything they can to show this community that you're trying to do something that's economically feasible for us, because we want to pass it.
Thank you very much.
When you said that the recommendation did not include, you said it did not include everything that the committee agreed on, is that what you said?
Yes.
Can you expand on that, what it did not include?
There were some, they were called, we couldn't, it wasn't part of our charter, but our charter included the ability to make some recommendations to the committee, and some of those, some of those were involved how we deal with the land issue.
Right.
It dealt with, can we talk about the sale of, of city property to help pay off this forty-five million? In other words, we're giving up the police departments on valuable property.
Right.
You know, there, there are some things that we're going to see as a result of this, let's get that money as much as possible, and let the community know, we're going to reduce this debt as fast as we can with other sources.
Okay, thank you very much, all right, Ms. Behrens?
So, it was the land?
So, the mayor is moving us on.
Well, excuse me, I'm still talking, councilmember. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia, have you asked to speak?
Yes, I was speaking.
No. You asked me if you could speak.
Do we usually ask to speak?
Yes, yes. We've talked about that in procedure. For decorum, check with the mayor before you speak.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I don't remember any of us doing that today.
It's, well, you're looking at procedures, you'll find it.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Barron, were you going to respond to something?
I'll wait till after all citizen speakers.
Okay, all right.
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow.
You know, I'm, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm here to thank you and to encourage you. Sometimes we, we had a diverse group of people that you nominated back in October meeting. We had five meetings, and we had some fairly vigorous discussions in those meetings, and, but we did come to a conclusion about that we need a new police department, we need fire admin offices, we need a new municipal court, we need an operational EOC when the lights go out, and, and we need more training room for our fire personnel. So, all 10 of us agreed that we needed new facilities, as you, but as you might imagine, it's kinda hard to always keep us on board, and, and we did write a report that you all received, and due to COVID, not all of us were at the final meeting to approve the report, but the report was approved by the people that were there. We recommended that you, you pass a $45 million bond issue to build these new facilities, so I'm here tonight to thank you for moving forward with our recommendation. I also want to encourage you to follow our lead and unanimously support the ordinance that's before you tonight. Finally, I just want you to know, and the community, and the community to know, that almost all members of the original committee are still meeting. We've brought together about another 10 people from the community, and Mindy, Wendy, Mindy Windley is leading us, and we're gonna try to get the word out and encourage the people in Kerrville to support this, this bond election. And finally, we're all looking forward to mid-2024, when we can cut the ribbon on the new public safety facilities and all move in, because it's gonna have everything in that building that we need for our police and fire and municipal court and EOC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Do we have another speaker? Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, all right. On 6A, what is your, what is your desire? What's the motion?
I thought Julie wanted to clarify.
Yeah, Julie?
Julie.
Did you need any clarifications on the tax rate piece, Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Do give us clarification on the tax rate.
Can you go back to my presentation? Okay, so, I included, yes, the, to question to making a relative comment about the value of one lunch was just a relative comment. It wasn't any misunderstanding on my part that people pay their taxes monthly. I did do an annual impact as well, so you can see that, and we did an overall calculation, and that is 13% to the annual tax rate. So, I'm not sure where that 20% number's coming from, I'm certainly...
So, what percentage?
13.
13, okay.
Yes, and so...
And again, that's to your city portion of your tax rate. Remember, that's about one quarter of your overall property tax rate, the school district being about a dollar of that $2 on your per thousand, and then the county being the other 50 cents. So, it's a little bit of a misnomer, say 20%, which isn't accurate anyway, but it's a 13% of your city property tax rate.
Okay.
And then, we would like to respond, actually, through the committee meetings, we took from that the conversation about selling the current facility to pay down debt, and so Ann and I had multiple conversations about that, and I'd like to let her speak to that, if we could, before we move on.
And before you do that, I just have one question. What are we paying yearly for rent for our fire administration?
We looked that up today, as a matter of fact, $42,000?
$42,000, it has a 2% increase each year.
2%?
2% increase each year.
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna turn it over to Ann for that final question, unless you have anything else for me?
Yes, so, the ability, you do have the ability, if you sell a property, to pay off your bonds sooner. The one caveat I bring out to that is that most bond issues, as you may recall, generally in Texas have a 10-year par call. We have negotiated on Kerrville's behalf many times, having an eight-year call or a nine-year call to help position you to take advantage of refundings and savings sooner than you would otherwise without any cost. So, the, the challenge is, if you don't know exactly when you're gonna sell the building or how much it's gonna be, you can, we can do a shorter call for some or a portion of it, but you'll have a little bit higher interest rate. So, we can embed some flexibility, but there is a trade-off relative to the interest rate to be able to put that flexibility in there. But it, it could be done, and it would just have to be analyzed at the time.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. All right, other comments, questions, council?
I would, if I may, Mayor, I would like to move that we approve ordinance number 22-07, calling for a bond election for the city of Kerrville for the purpose of a public safety building.
I will second that.
And if I may say something briefly before the vote, voting on this ordinance is really a couple of questions. One, whether we support the bond amount, and then, two, whether we want it to go on the ballot to be voted on by the citizens. There are still concerns about the bond amount, and this is no, I want to make sure that my comments and the questions earlier are not taken as criticisms of the bond committee or any members, because they did exactly what we asked them in such a short period of time that they were given, and I appreciate their efforts, so we can finally get this bond on the ballot to be voted on by the citizens. So, regardless, there are still concerns on the amount of the bond, but because even from the beginning, I was always in favor of bringing this to the citizens, I'll be voting in favor of that, to at least give them the opportunity to voice their opinion on it.
All right, okay. We got a motion second. All in favor, let me know, by the upraised hand. Okay, and it passes unanimously? Precisely, let me go back to something. The two things I actually meant to say at the beginning of this meeting is, number one, council should not interrupt each other or citizens. Number two, just check with me when you want to speak. That's not just a matter of the mayor trying to control everything, that's in our procedures, and it, and it really contributes to decorum. Okay. 7A, Ms. McElhanan?
Resolution number 08, 2022, a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse certain project costs, public safety facility, from obligations to be issued by the city of Kerrville, Texas, and other matters related thereto. We do have one citizen speaker sign up.
Right. Okay, Ms. Barron.
I really don't have a presentation for this matter. We talked through it in the ordinance presentation, so just open it to questions and citizen speakers.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
On page two of the resolution, looking at section four, the last few words of it says, well, I'll just read it, it says, "The resolution will be," and this is talking about how the city council directs that this resolution is maintained as a public record, and then it says, "This resolution will be made available for inspection by all members of the general public at the offices of the superintendent of the city." Who is that referring to? Because I've never seen that in any of our previous resolutions or ordinances. That's a different legal reference.
Mayor, City Council, I also just wanted to take this opportunity to reintroduce myself, because after I heard Ann come up here, I realized how uneloquent I was. So, my name is Jay Hua, I'm with McCall, Parkerson, Horton. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, and that, again, was just a form mistake that was not changed. It should reflect the city manager's office.
Okay, so the office of the city manager.
That's what you should say, okay.
All right. Okay, all right, do we have a motion on 7A?
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Peggy McKay.
All right.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. When it talks about the expenditures before the issuance of the bonds, what would that include?
Who can speak to that? Who wants to speak to that?
It could be any additional elements that council may have, if there were analogies, you have a consulting contract that you utilize for the public safety bond committee, that could be reimbursed, expenses such as that.
Okay, fairly procedural. Okay.
And it says the city would be reimbursed, is that outside the, the bond amount?
The resolution is specific to reimbursement by the bond amount.
Right, so to clarify, all this resolution does is allow the city to incur costs currently or before bonds are actually issued, and then, when bonds are issued, they can use tax-exempt bond proceeds to replenish their funds that they had spent otherwise.
But it's all included in the amount that's voted on?
Correct.
Nothing extra?
Correct.
Okay, and then, the, the other one that I was interested in is, what is the debt service amount to on this amount? Assuming, I know you have to assume that interest rate.
Ms. Barron?
Right, we do have to assume at this time, based on the projected rate. Martin, can I have my presentation back up? I do have a slide showing that.
Did he hear you?
Oh, Martin, can you cue my, there we go. Oh, this is really small. So, we presented this also to the bond committee, committee, as we went through the process, and so, this is very estimated based on the fact that we are assuming a 3.75 interest rate. Keep in mind that anything lower than that is gonna reduce the rate, and anything above that would increase the rate, but this was just our consideration at the time, as we used for a tool. I can certainly, you know, provide this to you, you know, in a more legible manner. I know that's really small, but basically, it would be broken out by year based on the expense of the principal and the interest for each year relating to debt, combining it with current debt.
Okay, on, on our debt service, it follows across by year, but we get a total. We also get a total.
Correct, so you're talking about going on the INS rate from .075 on the first year to .411, and that relates to the impact from the prior slide.
Okay, but that's the rate, and I'm interested in the total dollar debt.
Correct, and that's why I did this slide here, and I did it by property value, and we, yeah, we talked about this one a little bit ago, but this one is by property value. The property value in yellow here is the average property value from CERCAD for all certified properties within the city.
Okay, I'm gonna have to check that, because I'm not sure that answers, and I know the time's about up.
Okay, well, reach out to me, and I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
I will, thank you. And then, the last thing I was wondering, here it says they're, they're saying what it's for. One of the things is construction, and one is renovating. Is this anticipating either buying a building or constructing a new one, and that's why we have, because they're contradictory, you wouldn't be renovating new construction?
Do you want to speak to that, do you?
You copy?
I think the language that was included was just standard resolution language that's included with these bond issuances for any type of expenses.
Yeah, leaves, gives you options.
Wide breadth, correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's what it is, options.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. McKay.
Yeah, we had an existing one, and then it needed to add on, probably.
Okay. We ready to vote on 7A?
Yes.
Got a motion second?
We have a motion. I will move that we adopt resolution number 08-2022.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second. All in favor of 7A, if you'd let me know, by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, 8A, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number 2022-10, an ordinance annexing an approximate 62.062 and 20.8 acre tracts of land, both located within Comanche Trace residential development into the city of Kerrville, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of the city so as to include such property within the city limits. Approving a service agreement for the annexed property and adopting the zoning for the annexed property is a medium-density residential district R2, and there are no citizen speakers.
Mr. Paxton?
Mayor and Council, good evening. A couple key points on this one. This is an annexation for Comanche Trace. It is consistent with the minimum acreage set up in the development agreement with Comanche Trace for their future annexations. There is a 50-acre minimum for those. This one does include an existing donut hole, a portion of the golf course that was left out based on the smaller annexations from previous years, and does include a future phase of the development that will actually connect to Lower Turtle Creek Road, giving better access for neighborhood and the area for emergency access as well. There's a current zoning map showing the portions that were annexed as planned development district, portions are annexed as R2, and different phases that were annexed as R1 based on their Comanche Trace's development scheme. This one will be annexed as R2. This is that portion of the golf course that was a previous donut hole, and that future phase, and another portion of the golf course that goes down to Lower Turtle Creek. The Planning and Zoning Commission on January 6th approved this with unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Ms. Paxton? Okay.
Just, I know that Comanche Trace is a master plan community, so when they, when they present to you their annexation request, is that in a, is that generally in line with?
Yes, it is. Again, a majority of this property is developed currently as part of the golf course. The future phase does include that Comanche Trace Boulevard connection to Lower Turtle Creek. Obviously, there's phases in between that have not been completed as they're going through their market studies.
But it, sure, right.
But yes, it is consistent with their master plan.
It's consistent with what?
And the development agreement, correct.
So, Drew, what will, what will this leave them as, how much, I think you mentioned, how much land would they have, will they have left that probably will be annexed?
I do not know at this point.
Yeah, there's several hundred acres that are still remaining within the overall master plan that are further south and to the east, kind of along that Lower Turtle Creek area, around the existing clubhouse.
I want to compliment the city staff for working in agreement with Comanche Trace that we're looking at annexation, they present to us of 50 acres or more, because we have done piecemeal annexation of little pieces and so forth, and this is a, this is a better agreement, better way to do it. Also, I'd just like to say, that access onto Upper, or Lower Turtle Creek, that upper or lower there?
Lower.
Lower, lower, okay, Lower Turtle Creek, it really makes a difference in regard to safety. I drove that area yesterday, and boy, that'd be a long way from Bandera Highway back all the way to these homes, and this is gonna be good in terms of access.
That's correct.
All right, do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2022-10 on first reading.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion second?
Mayor, this is a public hearing, so just want to remind you.
You're right, yeah, do we have any, do we have anyone to speak to this? Okay, all right. All in favor of the motion, if you'd let it be known by the upraised hand, and it passes unanimously.
Do we need to show anything about opening or closing the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, she covers me on that. Okay, we got it at 7:48, okay.
Yeah, I was just making sure.
Okay, 9A, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number 2022-08, an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2022 budget to account for the receipt of additional revenue, the disbursement of such revenue, and to make other amendments as provided, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, all right. Ms. Barron?
Hello again. So, just for informational purposes, city departments can make adjustments to their expense line items throughout the year, moving money from one line to another line if they need to, as long as the overall impact to the expenses doesn't change. So, we do that periodically. However, whenever we do something that's going to impact overall appropriations, whether it's an increase in revenue line item or overall expense, then we have to bring that to you, and that includes transfers in and out. You have a summary level of the proposed changes by fund at your place, along with the budget ordinance. If this art does pass, I do have a 26-page line item specific journal entry that you're welcome to look at if you want to dig into it that deep, but I can certainly provide that, and that will be on file in the city secretary's office if this is approved.
Okay, council, questions?
Thanks.
Oh, you have some more?
I mean, go ahead if you so choose. I'm good.
You're gonna be up here tomorrow, I mean, you're gonna be up here tonight more than Paxton.
More than Drew, I know. We talked about that earlier, more than Drew. I gotta get a different name.
Funny, it's time and half, though.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so ordinance 2022-08 does require two readings, so one tonight and a second reading on the 22nd without the presentation, so you're welcome. The budget amendment will be proposed to amend the FY '22 budget in response to some of the following items. So modified forecast of sales tax revenue, as we've talked about over the last several meetings and throughout fiscal year '21. We brought to you in a workshop a cost of living adjustment proposal along with a market adjustment per the 2021 compensation study findings, and that was at the last workshop that we had. Also proposing an increase to the hot fund expenses, and we'll describe that as we go through this. And then reallocation of some fiscal year 2021 surplus funds that we've talked about several times, waiting for our audit to finalize so that we were sure before we went forward with reallocation of those funds. We're proposing some of those 2021 funds be transferred to asset replacement in response to that multi-year assessment that we completed as part of the budget process in fiscal year '22. If you'll remember, Guillermo presented that at a workshop. Also to capital improvement projects specifically for matching components of anticipated grants that we've talked about several times, streets projects, and any future capital improvement projects that may be ahead of us. So looking specifically at the general fund, fiscal year 2021, as you know, had a change in net position or surplus funds of $2.4 million, primarily, and we know, was due to strong sales tax performance. So our sales tax was $1.6 million ahead of budget in fiscal year 2021. But I think it's important to remember that we budgeted less sales tax revenue in 2021 than we did in 2020 in anticipation of the impact of the pandemic. We also had better than budget service and recreation revenues in fiscal year '21, and then some timing issues related to some contracted street maintenance projects that's common, and we talk about those a lot as well. We also spent less than budgeted in expense categories such as personnel, maintenance, services, and other smaller categories.
Can you say, if I can, Mayor?
Please.
Can you say again what you said about the street maintenance?
Yeah, so essentially, if you recall, a lot of our street maintenance work happens in that September or possibly October timeframe, and so it's just a question, many times we'll have the contracts let, but we don't actually pay them until the next fiscal year.
Okay, gotcha.
The capital project essentially is covering two different fiscal years.
So it will be spent, it's just going over to the next fiscal year.
Correct.
It's getting spent, it just goes into the next fiscal year.
We just reallocate that to make sure it's spent on those projects.
Okay.
So what we're proposing here from fiscal year 2021 funds is a transfer out, the first one being to general fund asset replacement for $443,925, and then transfer to capital projects for the CDBG grant that we've talked about several times of $52,500, and we're fairly certain that that grant will be approved, and we'll need those matching funds. In addition, the Tech Dot grant match of $263,000, and then the streets carryover that we just spoke of, of the $249,000 that was remaining from fiscal year '21, and then transfer to capital projects for reserve future projects. So you can see that our total there is 1.4 million. So what we're proposing is to retain $1 million of that surplus funding until we get closer, further into fiscal year '22 so that we can see exactly what the impacts are going to be. We can watch those revenue streams and see how they come in. And then it's very common to come back with a second budget amendment as we go through the year. So just taking a, you know, a very conservative approach and still very dynamic economy that we're just watching every day to see what's gonna happen.
Can you remind me, the capital projects, is that a new fund that we've established?
No, so the capital projects fund essentially is set aside only to deal with large projects. For example, street reconstruction, that's where our prior bond money went to. Any water projects that we've done, Legion Lift Station, we just assign a specific fund for all of those large projects for tracking. And so we track them by project number so that we can essentially look at a project, and regardless of what else happens to be in that account, we can sort it out and see exactly what was spent on projects. We can also budget for individual projects in that fund.
What happens if we don't get those grants? Where do those dollars go?
That would come back to you for reallocation, so it could either go into an undesignedated area of that capital projects fund for use for future projects, or it could be pulled back out of the capital projects fund to be used for something else that you may choose to use it for. So talking about the increase in the sales tax budget, and we talked a little bit about this in our market study and comp study, market adjustment and comp study presentation in the workshop. So the proposal here is to increase sales tax revenue budget by $725,000. That's still remaining very conservative at 8% over fiscal year '21, considering we're running about 15% quarter to quarter over fiscal year '21. We're anticipating that that increase will offset some of the expenses related to the 5% COLA adjustment for employees and all funds. Also including in this amendment would be to increase the expenses for those COLA and market adjustments and those personnel lines. And again, that's part of that 26-page journal entry that you could see line by line, and we just did it on a summary level for you today. We are projecting that fiscal year '22 will be better than budget in revenues, just watching what's happening right now. But again, retaining that $1 million just in case, you know, as we go through the year that our estimations change or we need to reestimate. And if that happens, then of course, we would utilize some of that fund balance to pay some of those personnel costs. Okay, this, moving on to other community investment plan, our CIP amendments. So as you know, Curville is slated to receive $5.8 million in total allocation from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, as we refer to it. In August of 2021, we received that first tranche of $2.9 million. We expected this money in June and anticipated bringing this to you as part of the budget process, but we did have to wait for the governor to request that money from the federal government and then make a determination about the body that was going to disperse that money. So he did appoint the Texas Department of Emergency Management to disperse those funds. However, they are not managers of that money. That is directly to the U.S. Department of Treasury. So the money is currently in our grant fund, and none of that funding has been utilized at this time. We expect to receive the second tranche of the same amount sometime in the summer of 2022. I just can't speak to exactly when that's going to be until we're notified. In May of 2021, prior to us receiving this funding, the U.S. Department of Treasury released that 150-page document that we've talked about a couple of times called the interim final rule for spending guidance, and it was really broad. So it gave us those four categories that we could spend from, but really no specifics. And so we just sat and waited because the same is when we dealt with the CARES Act funding in 2021, the guidance changes over time. So it's really important to understand that, again, TIDAM is not our governing body for that, but we are required to file reports with, through TIDAM that go through the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Explain TIDAM.
Texas Department of Emergency Management, so they oversee, just like we were talking about, our EOC earlier for the entire state of Texas. So in January of 2022, we were happy to see 437 more pages to sort through of a final rule. The nice thing about this is it was outlining eligible expenses. The final rule was very clear that emergency response equipment, specifically emergency response radio systems, is an eligible expense. So we're proposing that we transfer what we've received so far in ARPA funds to the CIP fund that we just talked about so that we can set up a project for the radio communications that will be presented later in the presentation. Again, if we receive the second tranche in time, then of course, that will be part of the budget process for fiscal year '23. That's what council desires allocation of the rest of those funds to be, based on the guidance given to us. Okay, moving on quickly to the water fund. So the water fund had less change in net position from the general fund. You remember that water cells were behind budget, sewer cells were over budget, so we ended up just a little bit ahead. But anytime revenues are down, especially on water cells, then also expenses are going to be down because they're relative to water flow. So we had better than budget expense categories as personnel, supplies, and maintenance, specifically chemicals and maintenance to our systems, that allowed us to have that extra funding and the surplus funding. So we're proposing the same kind of methodology in the 2022 budget amendment as we did in the general fund, and that is moving funds from the water fund to the water capital asset fund for future projects, and then also to the capital projects fund, so asset replacement fund, excuse me, and then also to the project fund, with retaining a portion of that until we can move a little bit further into the year and determine what's going to happen in fiscal year '22. That'll allow us some additional time to look at data, and it also adjusts, that accounts for adjusted expenses, again, for the COLA and the market adjustments based on the compensation study. Hotel occupancy tax fund, so we know we're about 11.5% better than budget right now in the hotel occupancy tax fund. We're proposing adding an expense of $50,000 for advanced preparation for the 2023 and 2024 solar eclipses. Y'all will get an exciting presentation from Chiefs and Ashley coming up on February 22nd that has more about that. But just a few pointers, Curville is in the direct path of both solar eclipses, and both are expected to produce four and a half minutes of total darkness. And we're right in the path of 100% annularity, and I had to look that up, and it means total darkness.
Wow.
So because of our location, the eclipses are expected to bring unprecedented numbers of visitors from all over the region. They're estimating about 150,000 people. So in anticipation of that, the regional eclipse planning has already started, and we've included emergency management and tourism logistics, protective equipment that we may need, safety measures to include traffic, vehicular and pedestrian, and crowd control, and a host of other things that you'll hear more about in the workshop. I added this just so you can see, this bright pink line here is where the total darkness is going to occur. So you can see that this is kind of a very rare occasion, so people will be flocking here to see this event. So we're trying to pre-plan for that. So next steps, what we have coming up in February, we're already estimating revenues for fiscal year '23, which is why when we talk about fiscal year '21 was less than 20, it's because right now is when we're estimating that. So we can change that along the way, but we do start that process now. Finance is conducting citywide budget trainings for all department budget staff. Human resources estimating salary components of fiscal '23 budget, and departments will start inputting their fiscal '23 budget requests in February and March. On February 22nd, I'll bring you the second reading of this budget amendment for the fiscal 2022 mid-year budget amendment. And you will also be presented with our annual comprehensive financial report from BKD, who is our audit firm, and also a financial update. So you have a few more meetings of me wearing Drew's name tag, and then I'll let him take you back. March and April of '22, finance will begin meeting with individual departments and going over detailed budget requests and asset budget, asset replacement budget based on that needs assessment that we've discussed, and also departmental needs. Happy to take any questions?
Counsel?
I was looking at the 5% COLA for our employees, and I know we have a higher increase of sales tax than we usually do. And that's why we're able to do this 5% among a couple of other aspects. But my question is, if we don't see that same amount of sales tax year, from here on out, what's our plan to be able to continue funding that for them?
Well, if you remember the graph that I brought in the financial update last month, it shows that continued increase for the last three years, so it's not just an anomaly that we're tracking. We saw it in '20, we saw it again in '21. We have $1.6 million left over in sales tax from 2021, and then we're seeing the same trend happening in 2022 primarily because of inflationary measures, but also, I mean, just our regional position as a retail hub. So, I mean, a lot of people come here to shop for a multitude of things. Tourism, we're talking about the eclipse, that's going to bring in tourists from all over the state, I would assume, and maybe further. So we continue to drive the tourism side, we continue to drive the tax side. So there's a lot of components, but also keep in mind, we're reserving $1 million. So by keeping that back and watching this as it moves toward '22, and as we get into '23 budgeting, we're taking all those things into account. We're making decisions on whether we need to come back and propose that we use some of that fund balance or that we roll it into those capital projects or into the asset replacement funds based on what the needs are at the time, and also based on what we continue to project. We watch this daily, monthly, it's a constant for us, and so we feel very confident that we're in a good sales tax position.
Right. And what we're doing is what we do during the year as this is needed.
Correct.
Standard accounting procedure and so forth.
Correct, that's right.
Okay. By the way, I think I'm gonna sell eclipse flashlights.
You should. Glow in the dark.
There may be a market.
Glow in the dark.
Glow in the dark, eclipse flash, there you go.
Make sure he reports the sales tax.
Yeah, report the sales tax, we need it.
Sales tax, right, okay. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2022-08.
Second.
I'm sorry, did we have a speaker?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, all right, yes. Okay.
Okay, so you'll decline this one?
Okay, all right. Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Wait, wait, Mr. Brudy's saying he's signing up. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay.
Oh, yes, George Brudy. You're right.
All right, George Brudy, 1616, Glenn Rhodes, I'll cut out the first paragraph just to make everybody happier. It just talked about the one-time revenue increase being used for ongoing expense, which is a bit risky, especially with the volatile sales tax, no matter how confident we are with it. But the other thing is, it's been standard practice for the city to first complete the, present to council and citizens the comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, before making a decision on any budget amendments. The CAFR displays a snapshot of the city's financial status at the end of the previous fiscal year. And the soon-to-be-published report will confirm a three-year trend where the city's street network and facilities infrastructure continue to appreciate faster than any investment into either. This is not only exposing poor long-term planning, but more importantly, it is a sign that our current tax base really can't sustain the current level of services that we're providing. In my opinion, and it is just my opinion, any one-time revenue windfalls should first be applied to our considerable amount of unfunded and deferred expenses, next, applied to any one-time expenses, like a backup generator, which we just had to pay out of debt, I guess, and then if any leftover amounts remain, leaving the fund balance. The bigger point, though, is that without the opportunity to see this financial report, the CAFR, it would be impossible for council or citizens to make an informed decision on the validity of any budget amendments. There appears to be no sense of urgency for these particular amendments, and I would suggest council consider tabling any of these amendments until the CAFR has been published and reviewed. That's all, thanks.
All right, we got a motion? Yeah, okay.
So it is very standard practice for us to bring two budget amendments to you in a year with the final budget amendment for year-end being prior to audit has even begun. And if you look back over the past several years, it's actually unusual for us to present a fiscal year, current fiscal year budget amendment that includes surplus from the prior year. And we've talked about this several times, and with everything that's been going on for the last six months, and then also audit being upon us, we chose to wait to make sure that our auditor did confirm what our year-end findings were. So that is an incorrect statement, and it is very common for us to do two budget amendments in a year, most of the time prior to the audit ever occurring.
I just also want to clarify too, these are, again, in the presentation, we elaborated that this budget amendment, council is essentially pushing dollars, one-time surplus dollars to capital projects that, as you all know, are utilized for the street system. Again, what we said is holding a reserve fund to see where revenues are forecasted by the end of the year, but the ongoing expenses that were identified within the budget amendment are identified and offset, anticipated to be offset by offsetting revenues that we're also seeing with a REIT forecast.
And our reserve fund is at least 25%?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can we have at our next meeting the CAFR report before we have our second reading on the, this budget amendment?
Ms. Behrens?
Yeah, it'll be presented, and it's going to be a part of your packet, absolutely.
I was meaning to ask you directly, could we have that set before the CAFR report, before we have this budget amendment?
Yeah, we'll review that agenda order.
Okay.
As it's coming up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of 9B, if you'd let it be known, wait, is it 9B?
9A.
9A, sorry. 9A, if you'd let it be known by the upraised hand, it passes unanimously. Okay, 9B, Ms. McLennan?
Ordinance number 2022-09, an ordinance restating and reaffirming the creation of Recovery Community Coalition of the City of Kerrville, Texas and providing for its purpose, membership roles and responsibilities. The provision as said board will be placed within Chapter 2, Article 4 of the City's Code of Ordinances and we don't have any citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, all right. Chief?
Okay. Give you a little brief update on the Recovery Community Coalition and some of the changes that we're bringing forward to council. So a little history, the RCC Advisory Board was created by resolution in 2016. In 2018, it was amended, the member qualifications by removing two citizen council members to be filled by citizens. Currently, the board structure is of 15 members, six of those members represent specific qualifications. So these are the current 15 membership qualifications that are out there and I can read through them if you would like me to.
I think so.
Okay. So six of those are specific and then there's citizen representation as the key, member of the recovery community and representative from a residential addiction treatment facility located within Kirk County. So some of the challenges that we faced in 2021 is out of the 12 scheduled meetings, we had to cancel four due to lack of quorum. So remember, we have 15 members, we need eight for quorum. In 2022, seven members, membership terms expired on 12/31/21 and we only had two applicants for that. So tonight before you, and we've met and we've discussed in regards to this, and I do have with us here in the audience is Sabine, Sabine Gunsel, and she's here to speak, she's the co-chair and also the secretary and she's been on the board for many years for that, if you have any questions. So we're kind of recommending action is adopt the RCC into ordinance 2022-09, reduce the membership from 15 members to seven members and revise the membership qualifications to be more inclusive with the word preference to the following. So we did reduce and some of those changes were owner or a staff member of a boarding home facility with a valid permit issued by the city, member of the recovery community, citizen of Kerrville with interest in these issues, representative of mental health support organizations such as the Kerrville State Hospital, representative Peterson Health, representative Hill Country MHDD Centers and representative from a residential addiction treatment facility located within Kirk County. And as I said, we use the word preference for that. Of course, all applications come before council to look at knowing the, knowing the qualifications. So questions or comments, and I do have Sabine here also, if you have any questions.
Can we go, well, can we go back to the qualification, yes, this here? Okay. I'm assuming, of course, that their terms are scattered, okay? What if a person coming off of that committee is, say, a, say, his qualification is he's a member of the recovery committee, uh, community, but yet the only applicants that you've gotten to replace that member may not have that particular qualification? Is, I mean, does it, do these seven qualifications have to be met?
Great question. So prior to this, yes, so they were met in there. We're looking at doing another adjustment to that, that individuals that apply for the membership may fall into one, two, three or more of these categories, so y'all can see those.
Yeah.
Now, at this time moving forward, if you have the applicants, so it's a preference to the following, they do not have to fit into that category. So you may choose two of the, two citizens with interest or two members of the recovery community if we are unable to find one of them. So I think that was the discussion that we had.
Right, no, I appreciate you doing that because Councilmember Eichner and I looked at that when we met with staff and if you look, that's why we had a recommendation and discussion about changing the wording so that it would be that council will select members of the coalition from the community stakeholder groups with a preference for a member from each of the following, but any of which may include more than one member. And the issue that we had with the applicants last time was that they didn't fit within any of the categories because it said you have to have all of these filled and then if you have all of them, then you can, you know, do more than one. So that was the change for that and so it'll allow that. And I assume we still have those members' applications on file and we can hopefully get them on if they're still interested.
All right, any other questions? We have a motion on this matter?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-09.
All right. Motion to second, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised, raised hands? Okay. Sabine, thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
10A, second reading?
Ordinance number 2022-02, second reading, an ordinance amended Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City's zoning code. By amending said code to include adding new definitions, revising the requirement for variances, requiring signs for notification and other amendments is provided herein. Providing the cumulative clause, providing per separability, providing an effective date, ordering publication and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall from the last council meeting, we did have some amendments presented. Mr. Hayes and I went through those and you'll see those in the draft ordinance in front of you, either by notation or, you know, blue line, red line. All of those amendments, we did agree, were beneficial to the ordinance, so that's why they are in that, the draft you have before you. We did look at one of the comments from Mr. Burdys, specifically to the travel trailer and recreational vehicles. You can see as drafted, Section B strikes dwelling unit and replaces it with travel, trailer or vehicle, actually recommending to leave that as it stated. The intent of this section, as we kind of kept going back rereading it, if you, if your residents are living in an RV or on your property, living in the RV, that would be prohibited. So anyone claiming that property as a residence but is not living in the dwelling unit is not allowed. If you have someone visiting you that does live full-time in an RV but visiting you for that 14 days or less, that is allowed. And so we actually had that kind of swapped in that original draft. So we are recommending that change, that is not drafted in the current draft in front of you. Aside from that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions about any of these amendments or any of the other parts of the issue.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a few, if nobody else does.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On page seven, we're looking at what's going to be Section C and D. They, this section seems very, seem a little bit confusing and contrary to each other. But basically, I guess I'm going to ask you, do these sections, when reading both of them as amended or as it's presented right here, do they basically mean to say that a person is not allowed to live in a travel trailer or recreational vehicle for more than 14 days in a residential district?
Yes.
Can't we just say that then?
No, because you could still have, could still have someone visit. It basically says that if someone is a permanent residence on that property, they cannot live in the RV regardless of the timeframe. But if someone were to bring an RV to your property and stay for up to 14 days, that is allowed. Section D actually is about the storage of a vehicle, so if you own an RV, you may park it on your property, but you may not live in it on your property.
So, okay, so what I'm looking at here is, so, okay, so going off of that then, D does say that, it says a travel trailer or recreational vehicle may be stored, which means parked and not in active use, and then it goes on. But then when you go to C, it says a travel trailer or recreational vehicle may be parked within a residential district but shall only be, and then it gives the categories where it has to fit in. So the reason why I said it seems contrary is because you have C that says you can park it, but it has to fit with A, B and C. D says you can park it there.
C is if you're parking it and using it. D is just storage.
Yeah, where?
Because it says may be stored.
Where does it say in C that it means when it's being used?
Occupied by one or more people who do not live in the dwelling unit.
Okay.
So if the unit is occupied, it must fall under Section C.
So then, okay, so then wouldn't it make more sense to say that a travel trailer recreational vehicle may be parked within a residential district if it's being occupied by more than one people who do not claim the travel trailer, the trailer or vehicle as their permanent residence and then that?
We can certainly take this back and look at some different language.
I don't find this to be, I don't find this to be troublesome personally.
And I think, just to add something, Councilmember Garcia, I think you mentioned these are separate categories, these aren't. All three of these conditions have to apply.
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, I, that just seems contrary to, and if somehow we could figure out a clean that up, I think when we're trying to adopt these codes for any citizen to look at, that seems very confusing.
Just know, between Drew and myself, you know, our, our role in this is to make it not confusing and so that people like perhaps you or me.
Right.
Who don't have travel trailers can understand if we do get a travel trailer, what, what rules apply. And then the second part to do is to be able to, you know, prosecute this in court should the, should the need arise. And so I, I think it's clear, but we're happy to, if you've got changes, then we're happy to consider those.
Okay, so I'll come back to that, but if there's a way we can clean that up and hold off on that, I'd really appreciate that because it, it's still, there's still some confusion on that one. But moving on, since I have limited time, going on to page eight, seven and eight, I guess, and we're looking at a shipping container and we're, on page eight, it, we're saying that we are, on Section 14, adding that as an authorized use within a PI district. A shipping container doesn't seem like a land use. When you look at the current land use table, you can see a bank is a land use, a cemetery, a golf course, a grocery store and a hotel, all land uses. So you can use your land as any one of those, but you can't use your land as a shipping container.
So Section 11 provides a definition for shipping container. Section 14 adds shipping container as a land use. So we are defining it as a land use.
But.
It is amending the land use table to include that as a land use.
So my question then would be, why is it included as a land use? Because it's really like a thing, like a bird bath structure that you have on, on your property or?
Because they're not utilized that way. Because they're utilized as pre-built, we've had several issues of people placing them on property without building permits and the current code is silent to them being treated as a land use. And so there is no regulation on them.
Okay, so.
So this is to provide clear regulation where they can be used as a land use.
Okay, do you have one more? Yes, if I could just, I think it was, it was just a final comment on this. And I guess what you just said is that we're regulating then the building materials of it.
No, it's not a building material, it is now defined as a land use. If you were to use one as a building material through a building permit, we do not regulate that. It is not the same thing. One refers to the building code and how a building is constructed. This is saying a shipping container, as it is created, is a separate land use.
Counsel, do you have other questions? Hey, do we have speakers?
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville, more shipping containers. My comment is, if we're going to have a shipping container on property, it would seem because of its enormous size that it should not be close to the street. And case in point is G Street and Water Street. It is right there up against the sidewalk and it's right there at the River Trail going to Shriner. It, to me, it's, it's a nice sort, the paint color's wonderful, but the size of it is overwhelming. And then I have a question about Section 5 and why all of Section 5 was deleted. Which is own property in one zoning and use something close by for parking.
Okay, Ms. Paxton, can you address both the shipping containers and Section 5?
Yes. The shipping container, based on this draft, would be required to be set back to the most adjacent front wall of any building. So even if a building is set further than the minimum setback, the placement of a shipping container would have to meet that front wall or further back on the property to prevent that issue.
Does this one grandfathered in?
It is grandfathered in.
Does that meet the setback?
It does not, but it's grandfathered in, so that.
It's grandfathered. Would it be possible that it arrived because it knew it could be grandfathered?
I don't even know when that one was placed there.
It hadn't been there too long.
And Section 5, this is, the more we review this section of code, really if the adjacent property should be using a lower or a different zoning district property, then the proper process would be actually rezone the property so that the uses are allowed, so that then the property could then be replanted if necessary into one property and so on. Staff did review this and don't really think that it's beneficial to the community.
The reason that caught my eye is of the property on Sydney Baker where a, a, a restaurant came in, apparently didn't plan for sufficient parking, they tried to put parking on the street behind it in a residential area and it saved the neighborhood of those residents because of this very ish, this very part of the zoning ordinance. They were able to maintain the, this, the standard of the neighborhood they've lived in for years, but this is what permitted it and now you're taking that away so that the owner of that business can go back, put a parking lot in that neighborhood. And I would like, they probably don't know this is here for a change, but it would be nice to know if they approved of it.
Mr. Paxton, comments on that?
You want to speak?
Or Ms. Hayes?
I guess I'm not supposed to touch that. Mrs. McKay is remembering correctly, and unfortunately, we lost a court case with respect to that issue.
I didn't know we had a court case.
Right, we did, and so we lost that and so we're currently negotiating, that's not a fair word, we're currently working through an ordinance to allow the parking lot on that piece of property behind the, behind the restaurant.
So nothing we can do can save that neighborhood for the people who live there?
Right, well, I mean, not with respect to a parking lot. And so I think the issue that staff had, speaking for staff and even the Planning and Zoning Commission is if you, it seemed like if you, if you have that here, it allowed for, it might be a parking lot, but then there'd be scope, creep on that use and so why not just take it out? And as Mr. Paxton said, go through a process of actually going, you know, trying to get that adjacent property rezoned.
But I think it's important to note that the city and the city attorney and others worked hard to try to preserve that neighborhood and, and really fought for that, but the court said otherwise.
And this section of code was actually used as part of the defense to that case.
I'm sorry?
This section of code was actually used as part of the defense to that case.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
George Burdys?
George Burdys, 1616, Glenn Rhodes, so just on to that, I'm not familiar with the court case itself, I'm familiar with the case, but I'm not familiar with the, the legal case. But the, the first sentence that we're, that we're removing a bunch of stuff, the first sentence, had it been just left there by itself, which was what council then wanted, the extras were all, the unlesses were added after the fact by not direction from council, had it been left alone, I believe it would have stood up. Because as you're doing it right now, removing everything, you talk about rezoning, but there is no rezoning necessary. If someone wants to just, if you take all this out, they can simply drive through on an access, doesn't have to be a parking lot. If I've got a property there that's going to allow me to drive through, I'm essentially giving an accessory use, secondary use, to a primary use in a different zone. And you probably could have cleaned it up by just simply saying, property in one zone cannot be used as accessory use to service a land use in another zone unless primary land use is permitted by right in secondary zone. I believe that would have solved the problem. Section 10, the travel trailer stuff, what I believe Mr. Garcia was trying to reference was C and D of that, the question. was C and D of that, the questionable one that everybody's looking at. C appears to be saying, a vehicle may be parked within a residential district but shall only be, so it's restricting it to be occupied. So you can park, according to C, you can park an RV only if it is occupied by one or more of those prescribed, um, tenants, if you will. And D says, a travel trailer may be stored, which means parked and not in active use, on a developed lot. So D is trying to say, you can park your own RV unoccupied on the lot, but C is saying you can't unless somebody occupies it. That's the problem he was trying to reference. That's section ten. Section eleven is the shipping container stuff that everybody keeps referencing. Whatever you want to call it, if I put a shipping container on my lot and I use it as a storage unit.
Yeah.
This will not apply. You cannot prevent me from doing it as long as I can get a permit for a storage unit on my lot. So shipping container is not an actual thing, cause they're not gonna use it as a shipping container. They're not shipping anything. So you can simply fix that by removing it and dealing with the fact that you can't regulate building materials or aesthetic, um, methods according to that law. So we were going to be, we're exposing ourselves with this one to another lawsuit, I guarantee you that. Section fourteen is part of the shipping container and I think that's it, so thank you.
That's the end of the speakers?
That's all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Uh, do we have a motion in regard to this matter?
I vote to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh-two with the exception sections five, sections ten, section ten, and section eleven to be further reviewed. Um, yeah, that's my motion.
Okay. All right, is there a second to that motion? If not, uh, do we have a motion on this matter?
This is.
For lack of a motion?
No.
Then we don't proceed. Am I correct?
I'm gonna move that we adopt, this is, this is second reading.
It looks like there's ambivalence about this, let's, let's table it. May I have a motion?
I move to table this item, um, until our first meeting in March.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion, second. All in favor of tabling this, let be known by the raised hands. Okay, and the motion carries. Um, eleven, eleven A.
Resolution number ten dash twenty-two. A resolution in support of the submission of an application to the twenty twenty-two Competitive Housing Tax Credit, HTC program through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, TDHCA by Riverview Manor LP for the new construction of affordable senior housing. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Ms. Foker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the resolution before you is a resolution in support of an application to a housing tax credit program by Riverview Manor, and they are looking to construct affordable senior housing. So something that's a part of this resolution that, um, I would like to touch on first off, as you may recall, council approved the resolution of support back in February of two thousand twenty for OPG Ridge Hill Partners for the same exact type of resolution of support for their senior housing project. Um, and within this is an in-kind contribution that it's asking to commit to. So I just wanted to note that it's common for these types of applications to require this kind of in-kind contribution to which council has previously approved as a reduction in fees, which is how this one is worded. And we do have a presentation, Michael Ash with JES Holdings is here to answer any questions and go over that if you'd like specifics on this project.
All right. Counsel.
Yes, sir. Let me, let me ask any counsel, any questions or discussion? Okay, okay.
Um, I, I believe you have, my name is Mike Ash, fifteen thirty-five, communal lago in Irving, Texas, uh, represent JES Devco, and we're here to ask for your support tonight for an affordable housing senior project we're hoping to develop at sixteen hundred Junction Highway, uh, the intersection of Goat Creek, Driver Road, and Junction Highway. It's a triangular parcel right next to Foxworth Galbraith Lumberyards. Um, to have a, you have a presentation in your deck, I don't know that I need to go over that, uh, given the time, uh, but just to give you a couple of brief highlights, one of the things I want to talk about is our companies. Uh, if you support this deal, it's likely that we will be partners, uh, will be a member of the community for an extended period of time, want you to feel comfortable with us. Uh, we have four interrelated companies, we will do the development, the permitting, the, the working through, the financing, all that. Uh, we also have a construction company, a management company, and I think most importantly, from your perspective, we are the investment syndicator. We've syndicated over three billion dollars worth of tax credits, and the reason why I think that's important to you is because that is the core of our business. And again, to emphasize why it's important is because we are going to be involved with that project for fifteen to thirty-five years. We have certain guarantees that we make to our investors over the first fifteen years in particular, so we will have development eyes on it, we will have property management eyes on it, we'll also have asset management eyes on it. Uh, we will make sure that all the tenants are qualified, uh, credit-wise, do criminal background checks, past residential history checks, uh, but just because the project has got to be a strong performer and we can't afford to have bad residents in there. Um, so I, I think that our involvement in long-term will, should bring you a lot of comfort with the project. Uh, in terms of the asset, the project itself, uh, sixteen hundred Junction Highway, it's gonna be a thirty-six unit senior project, high-quality asset. The exterior will be a combination of brick and, uh, hardy plank, uh, we'll be working through the design with city staff on that. Uh, there'll be eleven one-bedroom units, twenty-five two-bedroom units, a good range of interior amenities, we'll have a leasing office, uh, leasing staff onsite, we'll have a community, uh, gathering room with a warming kitchen, fitness center, uh, computer lab, computer center for the residents, we'll also have a couple of reading and game rooms, uh, scattered throughout. As you probably know, it's a really difficult site to develop, so I don't want to commit to what kind of exterior amenities we're gonna have tonight until we get a little further along with the site plan, but we typically would have things like a raised garden bed, uh, pet yard, those sorts of things. A lot of that will depend on where we get with, uh, the actual site itself. The residents there will have income restrictions, uh, the twenty-five of the units will have incomes of roughly thirty thousand dollars per annum, another eight of those units will have, uh, income restrictions of roughly twenty thousand, and then the, the.
Twenty-three.
Three remaining units will have, uh, income restrictions right around fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, so there, there will be income restrictions and rent restrictions that go along with that, hoping that it will help serve a really needy part of the Curville community. Uh, what we're asking from you specifically, as Megan referred to, is a resolution support and a resolution, uh, committing five hundred dollars in funding, typically through the form of a fee waiver. If the building permit fee is twenty-five thousand dollars, you'd only charge us twenty-four thousand five hundred, something like that, uh, eliminating, I think, financial impact on the city. So I think the reasons why I think this makes sense for the city is, A, it gets a development on a really tough site to develop, uh, B, it will increase the tax basis to help you allow to pay for the, the public safety facility that you're building. Um, it is a strong physical product, it's serving a need, and there is definitely a need for, uh, this product in the market. We have been trying to get into Curville for the past four or five years. We had the project on Lehman Drive under contract, I think, two or three years ago, it didn't score well enough. We didn't have it under contract two years ago when it did score well enough, so we have been here a long time and would be very excited to be a partner of yours. Uh, just in terms of the process, it is a tax credit deal, we are going to TDHCA for the financing, we submitted a preliminary application in January, the preliminary application was ranked number two in this region. The good news, good news for us, possibly for Curville, is that the number one ranked application was in Bernie. We looked at that last fall, the city told us that they would not change zoning for that site. I got a call from a consultant friend of mine today who says that Bernie is no longer in the mix, so I think the application is there for Curville, and, uh, the possibility is there for the housing for Curville if you want it. So again, uh, thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions, I would certainly appreciate your support.
So, uh, the, the, the process is, if, if the council says, we see a need for this kind of housing in our community, then our resolution goes to the, uh, the housing authority of the state, uh, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, and then they grade the different projects, and if they're, if you're approved, then it would move forward. I'll just say one thing, well, uh, I, in Curville, it is common to think that all of the senior adults are rich. That is not true. There is a, there is a real need. In fact, I'm gonna put my name on the list.
Okay.
All right, comments, counsel? All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number ten dash two zero two-two as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion second? All in favor, let it be known by the upraised hands, good.
Thank you, I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, eleven B, Ms. McAlahan?
In our local agreement with lower Colorado River Authority, LCRA, for the procurement and installation of a seven megahertz trunk radio system in the amount of two million eight hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
Are you still with me, counsel?
Hey.
The longer.
Tom.
Ten half hours.
Yeah.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this project. So the, uh, today presenting to you our Public Safety Communication System project. Um, back in twenty eighteen, we published our Curville twenty fifty comprehensive plan, and in that plan, our community agreed that one of the highest priorities of any community is public safety. This includes police, fire protection, and EMS, and that is reflected in our key priority area of, um, sorry, I can't read, uh, public facilities and services, and our guiding principle placed the highest priority on public safety, police, fire, and EMS. So this project is actually, uh, directly, uh, related to action item, devote the necessary resources, funding equipment to ensure quality fire, police, and EMS services. So just an overview of the project timeline, in March of twenty twenty-one, we started having internal conversations about the communication issue, so the city created a working group of, uh, personnel from police, fire, and IT to do an assessment of our current system, research communication issues, and identify needs. In summer of twenty twenty-one, we discussed the communication system issues in the community investment plan with council. We also held a council workshop in November of twenty twenty-one and formally presented to council our communication system issues and our present future communication needs. In that meeting, we notified council that we, we would be issuing an RFP for the project. So the working group came together and put together an RFP and issued it in December of twenty twenty-one. Last month, January twenty twenty-two, we reviewed and evaluated the proposals and in parallel, um, also did research on the American Rescue Plan Act. And here we are in February, uh, presenting, uh, to council a recommendation. So you probably remember this slide from our November workshop meeting, it's just an overview of our system as it is today. So the Curville Police Department is the, uh, public safety answering point for all Kirk County with EMS services available countywide. Um, police, fire, and EMS are all on a conventional digital VHF system, the police department has three channels, and the fire and EMS department also has three channels. Um, we have four antiquated dispatch consoles in the communication center at PD, they're more than twenty years old. We have aging radio equipment, eighty-six in-car units, a hundred fifty handheld portables, and all those radios are single-band radios. Um, so this slide, I'm actually gonna call the chiefs to present, um, since, uh, so they can go over the issues and how it impacts their operations, and I'm gonna slide far back for obvious reason. Can you give it a thought?
Uh, as we, as we discussed.
What's gonna, uh?
Get us confused. Uh, as we discussed it, uh, at the workshop, uh, we, we have several issues with our current communication system, uh, some of those involving, uh, limited or insufficient radio coverage, uh, both within the city and adjacent to the city, uh, limited, uh, building penetration, uh, the ability for us to be able to communicate from inside some of the larger structures that we respond to regularly, hospital, or HEB, uh, larger retail establishments. Uh, our VHS system, uh, VHF system, uh, is susceptible, uh, to outside interference, uh, and, uh, we have limited capacity in the sense that we're restricted to channels. As Charby had mentioned, we have three, uh, three channels, uh, we're currently operating on, on a single channel, uh, really limits our operational abilities in the field. Uh, we also see, uh, deteriorating infrastruc, deteriorating infrastructure, uh, related to our system, uh, both, uh, in the field as well as in dispatch, uh, we, we kind of see that through the degradation of our mobiles and portables, uh, which, uh, also limits our operations in the field. Uh, almost daily, uh, we hear transmissions that are garbled, or what we refer to as digital, uh, and numerous times you hear dispatch, uh, requesting units in the field to, uh, repeat their transmissions, uh, in an attempt to make, ensure that, uh, they're getting the proper information. Uh, our dispatch center, uh, has outdated technology, as Charby mentioned, uh, in excess of, uh, twenty years old. Um, anybody that's toured the police department with me, I've, I've pointed out what those, uh, uh, radio, uh, control systems look like, and to mention that, uh, I haven't seen those since I started in law enforcement, uh, twenty-five years ago, uh, was the last time I saw those. Uh, we, we have no, uh, no ability for any type of, uh, support or preventive maintenance contractually, uh, meaning anytime we have an issue, uh, we have to individually address that issue and, uh, and pay for, uh, whatever problems we see. Uh, and also tied into that is, uh, uh, no reliable local support, we have to, we have to many times send our portable radios off, uh, to San Antonio, uh, just for them to open the box, it's a five hundred dollar charge to take a look at, uh, at one of our radios. Uh, so all of these, uh, all of these issues, uh, lead to, uh, things that would keep the chief and I up at night, uh, officer firefighter safety issues, not being able to communicate while they're out in the field.
So back in December, when we were putting together this RFP, we had in mind what it, what we wanted in our new radio system, not just to address the needs of today, but so our needs of the future. Um, so we identified the following system goals, a reliable citywide radio coverage, uh, with the capability to operate in the region, improve problematic in-building coverage in Curville, improve audio quality and reliability of communication between officers and dispatchers, efficient use of the channels, frequencies that we can expand to other city operations, enhance interoperability with our neighboring cities and counties, responsive and quality proactive maintenance and corrective maintenance support, twenty-four-seven and three hundred and sixty-five monitoring and support, and most importantly, do it economically and make sure it's, you know, we can scale it in the future. Um, and our ultimate goal is just to ensure the safety of our personnel and citizens for all public safety requests. Okay, so, um, LCRA is the vendor, um, that, one of the vendors that we evaluated in, uh, what we're recommending tonight, uh, their proposal is a single-site, six-channel, seven-hundred megahertz, uh, system. It, they will replace all of our single-band radios, and that's for KPD and fire EMS, with multiband radios, uh, upgrade all of our dispatch, uh, consoles with newer technology so they, they can improve response time, um, network build-out to improve increased resiliency, radios with new technology and better audio quality, as Chief had mentioned, it would address, you know, some of the challenges they're facing out in the field, programming and installation of all radios, proactive system maintenance, system radio training, and three hundred, or sorry, twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five vendor support. As you can see, everything that LCRA is proposing, um, lines up with what we wanted in a system in the previous slide for our system goals, so it really checks all the boxes for us. And there are other advantages going the, uh, with LCRA. I won't, uh, read every single line item on there, so I'll just, uh, highlight the important ones. Operation and maintenance of all electronics, so example, if a switch goes out at the site, they'll replace it on their dollar. Uh, replacement of obsolete hardware. Software and firmware updates, so with today's cybersecurity landscape the way it is today, um, updates are critical to such a system. Procurement and licensing FCC frequency. So all those items that are listed above ensures that we don't end up in the situation we are in today. Okay, so, um, so this map here depicts the radio coverage for the implementation of the radio system at our single-site location. And this slide here is the, um, LCRA net, LCRA network. So going on the LCRA network will also give us the benefit of, you know, if we're along, going down I-ten corridor in a pursuit, our officers can still. going down I-ten corridor in a pursuit, our officers can still talk back to dispatch, you know, whether it's down by Bernie or in the same manner the EMS transport. So we'll have communication back to Kerrville as long as we're in this network. Okay, so the most important slide, right? So the cost of the site equipment, radios, accessories, the call-recording software, and what they call airtime, but really is maintenance, will cost us two million eight hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Counsel, some questions? I'm sorry. I jumped in there too quickly. Go ahead, go ahead.
So some additional estimated project expenditures. So staff anticipates the need for some ancillary radio infrastructure items consisting of electrical, HVAC, modifications, cabling, fiber, and other miscellaneous items. So that cost, in addition to the system cost, will bring us to two million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. I'm rounding up. If that's okay. So this next slide here is on funding. I'll have Drew Paxton come in and present that.
Okay, so just to kind of circle back what we talked about a little bit in the budget amendment. Back in the summer, when we first started talking about this, we did look at the possibility of using ARPA funds for this, but that time, the guidance was just too broad and we just weren't secure enough to say that we thought that was a possibility. We were happy when we saw the January guidance come out that very specifically outlined this particular type of project that could be utilized as an eligible expense. And so we're proposing as part of the budget amendment and then also in support of this project to transfer the dollars that we've received so far, that two-point-nine million, over to the capital improvements project fund where this project would be expensed from if approved. And then, you know, looking at those extra expenses, of course, those are just estimates at this time, coming possibly out of the second tranche, but it's only about twenty-three thousand dollars difference in the total. So we're not looking at a whole lot of dollars if that comes out to, that we need the maximum of those additional costs. It is important to mention, too, that by doing the R F P and then also the contract language, it does meet federal purchasing requirements. So we're checking all the boxes when it comes to ARPA guidelines in full. So happy to answer any funding questions, Shemaia.
I don't have a funding question, but Charby, can I get this slide presentation emailed to me?
Can you go back one slide before?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all of these, these additional estimated costs, are these site-related costs? So are these to put in at the site?
Not all of them. It's going to be a combination. It could be at the site work, at the, you know, police department. So it's miscellaneous items. So it's not just at the site.
I was just wondering what the timing of the implementation and the potential building of a new facility, that looks like.
It's relatively minor. The vast majority of these, you know, some of these elements will be carried over to a new location, like the consoles, as well as some of this equipment. You know, obviously HVAC and electrical, that's not going to move over, right? So there are some pieces of it that, regardless of the community's vote on public safety building, our officers are going to be in there for several years. It's a radio need that can't wait for several years.
I do understand that. It just was something that was going through my mind.
All right, other counsel, other questions?
If we approve this, how quickly would you be able to?
We're looking at a nine-month implementation timeline.
I'm sorry, if we implemented, when?
In nine months.
Nine months, okay, okay, all right. We have a speaker.
Bill Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Bill Morgan, I am the owner of Advantage Communications here in town. As of May, was our thirtieth year as a corporate member of the community. We also are a sales tax collector and a property owner in Kerrville. And the reason I'm here and disappointed is we found out about all of this as the Motorola is the, we're a manufacturer rep for Motorola. And so we, we found out about all of the plans Saturday as it was posted. And, you know, that's, and going forward, what Chief said about the system is absolutely correct. We've been band-aiding a obsolete system for a while. And so, so with that, I guess my concern was that we don't hear anything about this. And going forward with the system that's being talked about, essentially, we will not be able to participate in any, provide any service going forward for the subscribers because it's a Harris product. That, and so, so I'm here, I was here to ask to table this. And my concern, more than whether we got the bid or we didn't get the bid, is this is a long-term decision. And we do, the funds are there, those are all, the pieces are in place, but this is a long, long-use system. And there's things that we have not heard discussed as for implementation throughout the area because as the city goes to this system, you've got the county, you've got all the fire departments and everything else to consider here. So I wish I could present more. The problem was we heard about it Saturday and didn't get the courtesy, if that, of saying, you know, we're not going that direction or we're not planning on it, and here's why.
Mr. Morgan, I, yeah, Mr. Morgan, I would say to you that I'm sorry that didn't happen because I've seen the city consistently work to go with local vendors. And, you know, I'm sorry that didn't happen this time.
Right, my comment to that, Mayor, is that, you know, we did do an R F P, and we had a selection team that identified L C R A as the most qualified vendor.
Okay, all right, okay.
We had extensive conversations with Motorola for many, many months.
Okay, so you did have a conversation with Motorola, so, okay.
And that request for proposal process was published to the public a number of months ago.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, all right, do we have a motion on this matter?
I can ask, I was going to, you had a conversation with Motorola, but does that mean you had a conversation with them or no? Which is fine, I was just curious. I wanted to distinguish what that meant.
Initially, I was under the impression that one of the representatives had connection with Advantage. I may have misunderstood that.
Okay, sure.
We are the manufacturer rep. Because of the scope of this and the future of what communications are going to do statewide, we have the entire Motorola team, which is a tremendous resource behind it to be able to, but yes, so.
And sir, do you mind stepping up to the microphone, please, while you're speaking? Thank you.
I'm sorry, the, so, so yes, the representative, the way that we operate is we are the manufacturer represented. The sale, the support, the everything is on Motorola paper, which is the premier communications company in the world.
And so there was communication or conversation with the city from, with you or somebody else?
Yes.
On your team?
Yeah, okay.
And do you have a better bid to propose this with? I mean, I assume, you know, the team looked at all of this.
Right, like I said, back in January, we, our selection team met and had some extensive conversations and identified L C R A as the most qualified vendor.
Went out for an R F P process.
In R F P, it went out. It was publicized. Okay, all right, okay. Do I have a motion on this matter?
I'll authorize the city manager to finalize and execute an interlocal agreement with L C R A to procure a seven-hundred-megahertz trunked radio system.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor of this, they'd be known by the raised hand. Okay, thank you. And we have an L C R A board member with us tonight, Mr. Mike Allen. All right, we are nearing completion. Okay, are there items for future agendas?
Yes, sir, I have two. One, I would request an item to be placed on a regular meeting agenda by the end of March of this year to look at using Zoom as a permanent part of our meetings. It seems that many citizens have appreciated and enjoyed the ability to use it, and it's been a convenience to them. And if I'm not mistaken, I know, I believe our municipal court still uses it, and they found it helpful as well. So just an item for, to get in information from staff if there's a cost analysis that needs to go into that. We probably have a license with Zoom. I don't know how that's going, but just some information on if we could use that as a permanent part of our meetings.
All right, do we have a second to that? It asks for lack of second, another one.
We don't need a second, do we?
What?
Why are you doing this?
Yeah, yeah, we now require a second. For future agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. McAlahan, second's there, okay?
Thank you. And the second one, I would like to see if staff could prepare or, however we usually do this, a commendation recognizing Mr. Alan Hill, who recently passed away. He was a prominent member of our community and not only dedicated himself to our community and the veterans, but also to our nation while he served in the Army. So I'd like to see if we can get a commendation prepared to recognize him at a city council meeting soon.
I second that. All right, do we have a vote on it? Okay. Accommodation for Alan Hill, okay?
I have, thank you.
All right, nine oh one fifty-seven, we adjourn. Unless you have other things you want to deal with.